Stay tuned. The Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly. I call this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powhatan District and is Vice Chair to the Board. Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Ms. Sadler represents the Stonehouse District. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Mr. Eisenhower?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhower represents the Jamestown District and is Chair to the Board. Sitting to my left is Adam Kinsman, County Attorney, and I'm Scott Stevens, County Administrator, and it is my pleasure to be clerk to the Board. All present.
Before we start, we usually start our meetings with a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will allow the Stonehouse District Representative, Ms. Sadler, to introduce the pledge leader, but before that, I would like to ask everyone during the moment of silence to keep in your minds and hearts the tragedy in Virginia Beach and the folks who were affected there. Ms. Sadler.
Tonight's pledge will be led by Mariana Gaten, a fifth-grade student at Stonehouse Elementary. She's currently serving as the Student Council Association President and previously served as the SCA historian. Her interests include art and writing, and she's a member of the Wisk gymnastics team. So if you'd like to come on up after a moment of silence, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on up, Mariana. Thank you.
Before we start our presentations, I would ask that the Board indulge me for a few minutes. We're going to have our County Administrator comment on some things that we have done to assist the folks in Virginia Beach.
Good evening. Our Chairman asks that I take a minute and share what James City County has done to offer support to the Virginia Beach community. We are a close community, and many of us have regular interaction with our counterparts throughout Hampton Roads, including Virginia Beach. The evening of the tragedy, several of our department heads made an effort to reach their counterparts. I sent their City Manager, Dave Hanson, a message sharing my concern and offer of assistance. Our emergency managers from across the region went to work that evening to provide support to the Virginia Beach Emergency Manager and ensuring that if a request was made for assistance by Virginia Beach, it was met. Our own emergency manager, Sarah Rutt, spent the Saturday following the incident and this past Saturday, working in their family assistance center. She worked in their emergency operations center yesterday and will continue to provide support as needed. During the weekend of the incident, we posted a message on social media from our Board of Supervisors. We encouraged our employees to look after themselves and one another and asked them to share security concerns or ideas they may have that will work for our work areas. We have completed building safety audits over a year ago and are revisiting the recommendations in the audits to ensure we are doing what we can do to provide adequate security in and around county facilities. I was at a meeting last week with the Virginia Beach City Manager. He said they have relied heavily on their neighboring communities due to proximity, but shares appreciation for all the outreach and assistance that they have received. We will continue to offer our support to Virginia Beach and are ready to help in any way with their recovery. At our Chairman's request, we have drafted a resolution of support that the Board of Supervisors may consider adopting. I would like to at least share this resolution since we didn't have it as part of the agenda. It's a resolution expressing condolences to the Virginia Beach community, whereas on May 31st, 12 innocent people lost their lives and four others were injured during a mass shooting at a city of Virginia Beach municipal building. And whereas more than 5,400 City of Virginia Beach employees and more than 450,000 residents who make up the greater Virginia Beach community are deeply impacted by the tragic event and are forever changed by a senseless act of violence, and whereas there are very close relationships throughout the region, and what affects one community has an impact on the entire Hampton Roads area. And whereas James City County commends the Virginia Beach first responders who bravely put themselves in harm's way to end the threat and save lives, and to the Virginia Beach staff who provided a proactive response to support the families and colleagues affected by this event, and whereas James City County desires to express heartfelt condolences to the victims' families and colleagues and to all of our fellow public servants and Virginians who have been touched by this sad occasion in the Commonwealth's history. And whereas James City County stands ready to provide assistance to the City of Virginia Beach and stands in solidarity with the victims' families, our local government colleagues, and our fellow citizens during this difficult time, now therefore be it resolved that the James City County Board of Supervisors officially expresses condolences and love for the Virginia Beach community and commits to providing support as needed to help the Virginia Beach community.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. I would look to the Board for a motion to adopt this resolution.
Motion.
Ms. Sadler. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay. We will first go into our presentations, and I'm going to go down to the other podium here for our first one because I have to bring some extra papers along. This evening, I would like to recognize some young men, Scouts, Eagle Scouts, who have attained that scouting's highest honor. Their achievements stand as a credit to their family, their troop, and their community. James City County has a culture which honors and supports citizens who have made significant efforts to improve the community through community service, and I believe that making a positive difference in the lives of others is the truest expression of leadership. Your service to the community has already made the world a better place, and hard work and strong values, follow-through attitude, and compassion for others that you have displayed along the journey have prepared you for a meaningful and exemplary life. I congratulate you on your achievement and wish you continued success as one of our bright young leaders, and I have an entire stack of proclamations to present, and I would ask the Scout Leader to bring them forward, and will please align here.
Logan Allman, Troop 103. Ask him this way a little bit more. Jared Collins. Alex Rodrikas. Don't want to mess up his name. Alvin, 102. Ken McGee, 155. He here? Oh, he's not here. No, he's not here. And Travis Simmons, 102. You guys tighten up in the middle. Tighten up this way. Push back to the...
We need this guy at every board.
Again, our congratulations and thank you for your service to our community.
Congratulations. That's tremendous.
Okay. Just one off. Okay, we'll proceed with our next presentation, the Historical Commission Essay Contest Awards, and Historical Commission Vice Chair Dudley Parrish will be here to make the presentation. Either one you like, sir.
Members of the Board of Supervisors, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity tonight to recognize two young high school students, Brian Brianna McNulty and Gerald White. These young people are recipients of the 2019 James City County Historical Essay Contest. My name is Dudley Parrish. I'm the Vice Chair of James City County Historical Commission. Our mission is to further the efforts of county to document, preserve, promote the public interest in the history and historic preservation of the county. The year 2019 marks the 400th anniversary of several significant events in Virginia, especially in Jamestown. These events had profound impacts on the shaping of the state and the country. To commemorate these events, James City County Historical Commission sponsored an essay contest for Williamsburg and James City County High School students. Students who reside in James City County or in the city of Williamsburg were eligible to participate. The participants could be students in public or private school or homeschooled. The contest essay calls for the following events are recognized in Jamestown in 1619. First elected Legislative Assembly of the New World, the first recorded arrival of Africans in English North America, signifying the beginning of slavery in what is now the United States, or the first organized recruitment of English women in significant numbers. Those three were the topics for this year's contest. Tonight, we announce the winners of the essay contest. I'd like to recognize the two individuals, Brianna McNulty and Gerald White. If you could come up here beside me, I'd appreciate it. Second prize goes to Gerald White of Lafayette High School for his essay, "Women's and Valuable Involvement in the Establishment of Jamestown Settlement." Gerald will be receiving a certificate and a check for $200. First prize goes to Brianna McNulty of War Hill High School for her essay, "American DNA," which chronicles the arrival of first Africans to this country. Brianna is receiving a certificate and a check for $300. I'd like to thank the two individuals for their efforts, and we'll be, I guess, a couple of photographs for posterity, but thank you very much for your involvement. We appreciate it, and there will be another contest next year on some different topics, possibly, but we appreciate your interest in the community.
Thank you.
The next presentation is new police officer introduction. Chief Ryan Hammer.
I brought his hat. I like that. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, County Administrator, County Attorney, and citizens of James City County. It's a pleasure to be here. Love the opportunity to introduce some of our new police officers to you all. This is Officer Scott Root, who was born and raised in South New Jersey. He received his BA in Pastoral Ministry from Moody Bible Institute in Chicago. He worked as a youth pastor for several years in two different churches in the suburbs of Chicago where he also met his wife, Catherine. They were married in 2013 and moved to Northern Virginia in 2014, where he served as a youth pastor in a local church for four years before making the decision, making the decision, to transition into law enforcement, which ultimately landed him here in James City County. We're very excited about Mr. Root's future here. He has an extremely positive attitude, a positive work ethic, and chose this profession because he truly wants to help people and make a positive impact on our community, and that's what we look for in our police officers. So please join me in welcoming Officer Scott Root.
Okay. Next is accreditation presentation to the Police Department. Sheriff Joe McLaughlin will present this. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Let me reacquire the certificate the chief tried to hide. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the Board, citizens of James City County, it is indeed an honor to be here tonight representing the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission. I've been on that commission since June of 2016, been in the accreditation process as an assessor, an elite assessor, for some 20 years. It's more important to me to be here presenting this certificate to a good friend, Chief Reinheimer, and to a great law enforcement agency, the James City County Police Department. The accreditation process, as you may know, is a voluntary process. Of about 400 different agencies, law enforcement agencies in the Commonwealth, we're getting ready to break the 100 mark in our next commission meeting. Having said that, you have to understand how difficult it is for any agency of public safety to make the time to allow trained assessors or trained inspectors to come into your agency, to look at your records, to, in attempts to identify your strengths and your weaknesses. I can tell you, as a sheriff, it's not an easy task to open your doors and allow someone to come in and poke you in the soft underbelly as you move forward in fear as to whether you're going to remain accredited or not. This says a lot about your police department being willing to volunteer to do this. The accreditation process is one of 190 standards, in that, not that I counted, but there are 784 bullets within those 190 standards. Each accredited agency must maintain that accredited status for four years, which means they have to maintain a record meeting each of those 190 standards, multiple bullets for a four-year period. Sounding, that sounds like an easy task, except that they have to do it annually and turn in verification forms, so truly you're being assessed every year for the four-year period. Very proud to say that James City Police Department did a remarkable job on their most recent re-accred. They had 100% compliance. They had no files returned, no minor or major issues within their office, so the assessment team was able to say they had their perfect accreditation, and that means a lot because in this process, it's not just coming in and looking at the folders, it's conducting onsite interviews, it's looking at the equipment, it's meeting the citizens. The part that is most important to me is, this shows you that your agency, your law enforcement agency, your public safety partner, is not just saying they're doing things at the proper standard, saying that they're doing things to meet the legal opinions of the various courts. They've proven that they're doing jobs the proper, correct way, meeting all of the legal standards and meeting all of the accreditation standards. So they're not just walking or talking the talk, they're walking the walk, and every member of the James City County community should be very, very proud of the police officers and the agency that you have here as your primary law enforcement agency. I'd like to present this certificate, and I'll read it. Certificate of Accreditation. This document certifies that the James City County Police Department came before the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission on May 9th, 2019, and has met the requirements set forth by said commission and is therefore certified as an accredited agency for a period of four years, this being their fifth award, and it's signed by the Chairman of the Commission, the Director of Criminal Justice Services, and the Vice Chair. I'd like to present this to your chief, my good friend, Brad Reinheimer.
I do want to tell you this. Brad sits on the Accreditation Commission with us. We had a hard time keeping him from voting on James City's award.
That's not true. And I just, I just want to say thank you all very much. Thank you, Board, obviously, for your support over the years. It's certainly been tremendous, and County Administration, County Attorney's Office, everybody's always been so helpful with us. All the department heads that are here, everybody. It's truly a team effort to receive this accreditation, and the ones who do all the work are the folks standing behind me, and Dave Dano, our accreditation manager, who couldn't be here today, so I want to thank the team for all the work that they do, and we wouldn't have this certificate without you all and the work that you do, so thank you all very much.
You want the poll board?
That's a silly question.
That's right.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is public comment. As a reminder, I'll tell folks, we have a little timer up here. When your red light comes on, your time's over, so please make sure you yield to the next speaker at that time. And I'll call our first one is Mr. Jack Fowler.
Members of the Board, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinsman, good to be back and see you all again. I would like to continue with VDOT. VDOT has made progress, but there's still much to be done of the things I've already spoken to you about. In particular, 1999, which the Jersey walls and the drains along the edges, some of them are stopped up or partly stopped up, dirt's that high. The other part at Jamestown Road is clean, so they are making progress on that part. Now I'd like to go into a little bit of the problem of why we have a problem with VDOT. The gas tax, federal tax, is 18.4 cents. It's been that way for 25 years. In 1993, the gas was a dollar and 11 cent, and you were still paying 18.4 cent a gallon on it. The state now has 40.8 cent per gallon tax. The federal and state government is using our gasoline tax money at the ATM machine for things other than to use for the maintenance, upkeep, and building of our roads. Most people don't realize it, but the state and local government own 98% of the roads in this state, not the federal government, so the federal government has no business and no right to bother our taxes that we're paying to the state, the upkeep of our roads, and for VDOT in general. A genius that worked for VDOT decided they would outsource a lot of their jobs that they normally had done because they didn't have enough money to do the things that needed to be done, things like cutting trees and so forth, snow removal. They don't have the manpower to do those things. They've cut the workforce by over half, and it's at the lowest point it has been since in the 1960s, but yet there's many, many roads, many millions more cars all in the country on the road, and we don't have the money to take care of it. The Kroger Depot is in bad shape. I've been there several times lately. I took a drink in their water. I don't want a second drink. The building's in bad shape. It needs to be torn down and rebuilt. VDOT doesn't have the money to do that. Something needs to be done. The county itself, in my opinion, needs to look into the situation as to why we have this situation going on, and somebody needs to be held accountable for them taking our money to use for other things besides keeping our roads up. That doesn't make an excuse for the leaders, local and on up to Richmond, to give... That doesn't make an excuse for the leaders, local and on up to Richmond, to give you a glowing report every few months about how great a job they're doing. I'm sure these people don't want to lose their jobs, but they're not going to say anything. They're going to say what you want to hear. But what you hear is not what I see. And I bring it up to you all the time with the problems that we have. We have another one that still has a barricade on it. Twice in the last week, it's flooded into the road. I'll love you there and know where I'm talking about. It's time for something to be done. It's a safety issue. The water penetrates under the road. The road's susceptible for failure, to collapse in, mosquitoes, same on and on. A bottle cap of a bottle of water laying down on the ground, as full of water as enough water for mosquito to lay eggs in. Things of that nature doesn't take, I started on this in September this last time. It doesn't take that long to get something done when there's fragrant violations of our rules, regulations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Next speaker is Katie Rivas. Katie Rivas here? This was submitted online, so I will mark that as not here. Following, following that, we have Carrie Messer. Carrie Messer here? Okay, neither one of those were, those were submitted online.
Chairman, my purpose being here this evening is to discuss the Busch Gardens-Kings Mill issue. Is this the right time?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, sir, supervisors, ladies and gentlemen. I emailed the Board members over the weekend with a letter and a photograph. I hope you've seen that. This is speculation on my part, but we've been advised by the Busch Gardens folks that we have a tall structure in mind with a spire on top. Well, this is very tall, has a spire on top, so my speculation is, I could be looking right down my street at this very item. In fact, the photo that the Busch Gardens representatives presented a week or two ago in Kings Mill, I think it was taken from my driveway. Kind of a space needle thing, but it's, it's an eyesore. It's not going to help my property value or anybody else on my street, or anybody else in the general vicinity of my street. Last month, in this room, someone made a comment about paraphrasing, "Y'all Kings Mill people knew what you were buying into." That's true, absolutely. However, at the same time, Busch Gardens folks, at that point in time, 70s, knew that the land across the road was planted for residential neighborhoods. So it shouldn't be a surprise at that point for either of the groups. It looks like a surprise to me, though, when you start putting up towers, rides, attractions, whatever the thing is. It's 600% greater than the code that the supervisors established. I believe it's 60 feet. And the question is, how, how high is high? In this same room last month, somebody said something about, "Well, we want to be a good Does this look like being a good neighbor? The question I have, I have a couple of questions. A question I have for the Board this evening, if you approve this request for variation at a 600% height over the standard code allowed, what will you not approve? What about the next request for 800%? 900%? There's a structure, an attraction of some sort in Las Vegas is over 1,100 feet in height. What are you folks going to do when there comes another request, year, three years, five years down the road, and it says, "We want something greater than 600%. We want something like 800," or 1,100 feet, as the case may be? The other question I have is, who can tell me where the good neighbor policy is? From my viewpoint, it went away. And with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Amos. Okay, our next speaker is Margaret Fowler.
Good evening. Nice to be back with you again. And I too, of course, speak about the Busch Gardens height waiver issue, and you've received a number of emails from me. One today, early, I'm sorry I got it to you late. It documents a number of things that I think are important for you to consider. But I want to follow on the last gentleman's comment. The Bush people, Busch Gardens people, have made the comment a number of times that we in Kings Mill knew what we were getting when we bought there. And he's right, we did, and they're right, we did. And what we bought at the time was an amusement park, an amusement facility, whose rides were below the treetop, who was open three or four months a year, and then we had quiet the rest of the time. That's not what we have now. Their business model has changed. And our knowledge of this area and the treasures that we need to protect have changed, too. Since 1977, the treasures of Jamestown Island have been brought forth. Dr. Kelso has excavated that island now with 2 million artifacts and the potential for World Heritage status. That didn't exist when they were, when they brought forth the amusement park in the 70s. So here we are today, and we have, if you look at the documents that you have on your own website about the prior requests for height variance that Busch Gardens has asked for, what you see is exactly what this gentleman just described. It's an ever-increasing height waiver for ever-taller rides. And if you look at the rides that are available, it's an easy Google search to find out the tallest rides in the country, you'll learn that this one that they're proposing is nowhere close to the tallest. So we do have to expect that they're, according to their own logic, they want to stay competitive. I'm constantly told that, "Well, wait a minute, this isn't the power lines," because I do, I have been involved with that, I'm still involved with that. No, it's not the power lines, and I never thought it was. I sometimes think that you all maybe have forgotten what the issue with the tower, the power lines were. The issue was the degradation of the view shed. The degradation of the view shed that disrupted the evocative nature of the landscape that existed when John Smith landed here. And since we've been involved in the power line issue, hundreds, if not hundreds of thousands of pages, have been penned that intend to document the value of the place. Not the value of the place with regard to the power lines, the value of the place as it exists today. And sometimes with things in our own backyard, we take them for granted. But this is the site of America's founding. A resolution of Congress designated this as America's founding river. The Code of Virginia codifies this section of river as a historic river that should be protected and should be considered if development is planned to be put there. And in fact, in the last opinion we just got with relationship to the power line matter, Judge Tittle of the U.S. Court of Appeals noted specifically that there are modern day, his word, "modern day intrusions represented by Busch Gardens." He mentioned that specifically. "Busch Gardens is a modern day intrusion on an otherwise evocative landscape." So let me finish by suggesting that there's a theory in policing known as the broken window. You have a building, the windows aren't broken, but somebody walks down the street and the building's been abandoned, somebody picks up a rock and throws it in. And until that point, the building had been left alone. But once the first window breaks, then people, the next guy walks by and throws another rock, and more windows break, and over time, the building degrades. And that, in essence, if you'll forgive me, is akin to what we have here. A continued erosion of the view shed on the James, and the county must recognize this going forward, not just for this project, but for any project. Where, with all the view shed analysis that's been done with relationship to the power lines, there's plenty for you all to consider about the places on the James itself that are subject to degradation. I ask you, please, to deny this waiver. This is just the beginning of another window being broken. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Our next speaker is Ronald Kirkland.
Good afternoon, Chairman Eisenhower, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Ron Kirkland, 1001A Richmond Road, and I appear before you today on behalf of the over 2,000 employees and 100 members of the Williamsburg Hotel and Motel Association. We would ask that you support Resolution HW190001, Busch Gardens Height Waiver 2019. The economic interests of Busch Gardens, James City County, tourism, and the lodging industry all come together in this resolution. Busch Gardens has been a strong community leader, and they operate a safe, beautiful, fun, and successful operation. Over the years, they've been a wonderful partner in the community, and if they feel the need to invest millions of dollars in a new attraction, requiring a height waiver that will help them continue their success, attract more out-of-town visitors that will pay substantial taxes, a mounting sales tax that contributes to the general fund of James City County, helping to keep property taxes low, and continue significant financial contributions to our schoolchildren, teachers, law enforcement, firefighters, paramedics, parks and rec, and much, much more, then the WHMA would recommend that you vote to pass the resolution and end any further delay in the approval of the height waiver. We can't afford not to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland. Our next speaker is Peg Borman.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman Eisenhower, members of the Board, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinsman, Mr. Pierce. I'm Peg Borman. I reside at 17 Settlers Lane in Lightfoot. I come here to talk three Rs, no trash. Once again, I want to encourage everyone to reduce, reuse, and recycle. But let's reduce the amount of trash that we generate, reuse what we can, and repurpose it for other reasons, for other possible things that we can use it for, and recycle. Of course, I know that recycle is the word of the day, and we all must continue to recycle, and it's for the good of everyone. I have some handouts for anyone who would like to have them on the table in the back. It's all concerning a new recycling program. There's so many that are concerned about that, the upcoming fee of $7. But let's think about it, that's cheaper than a combo meal at McDonald's. And if you don't want to pay the fee, you can take it to one of the convenience centers. But remember, you must sort it after you get it transported there. And so curbside to me is a real convenience for all of us, because we all have time constraints. County's not going to be charging us until October, although we'll go out in August, I guess mailing will. So the program's going to start on July 1st, so we have a break there in how much it will be paying. Also, if you don't recycle, your trash can's going to get much fuller, and it means that you could be paying an increase to your tax to your trash vendor. We must, however, make sure that we don't contaminate the recycling can. Only one and two, number two, one and two plastics will be taken, cardboard, metal cans, aluminum cans, glass bottles, and mixed papers. In the past, there was way, way too much trash put into the recycling bin, contaminating it, causing, perhaps that was one of the reasons that China started refusing to take it. And I think our recycling cans became a free trash disposal for a lot of people. And it upsets me to think that we're trying to recycle with a purpose, and then it gets contaminated and taken to the landfills or wherever instead. Also, remember, there are no plastic bags of any kind allowed in the recycling bin. We can take those plastic bags back to the stores, the grocery stores will accept them, or to the schools. The schools do accept these, and they receive a bench made from recycled bags, if they've got more than, whichever, there's a new, a school gets one every year. So let's all try to be more aware of what to recycle. If in doubt, it's better to throw it out into the trash, reuse, reduce, reuse, recycle. Now, let me quickly say thank you to all the volunteers who helped make our Volunteer Appreciation Picnic on June 1st a success. Thank you, Mr. Eisenhower and your missus, also, Mr. McGlinnan and your missus, for coming out and celebrating with us. We were honored to have you there. So sorry that the rest of, the others of you were not able to make it, and we missed you, but maybe the next one. And Mr. Stevens and the rest of you, I'm sorry that we didn't, we missed seeing you, but for the next one. We had a bit of a downpour just as we were setting up, right on time with Will Barnes' timetable. It was good, we celebrated the spring cleanup volunteers and Adopt a Spot volunteers. And we were honored to have Mrs. Barbara Barnes as one of our guests. Again, thank you all for coming out and helping us make it possible. There were so many of the businesses helped us with reducing our trash and helping us to have less garbage going out, and we hope we met that then. Again, thank you all very much. Special thanks to Mr. Robert Hodge, I almost forgot him, from WMBG, he was there. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Borman.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just take a moment. Ms. Peggy, I just wanted you to know, I found this trash under my desk when I got here, and I just want you to know that I take your litter policy seriously, so I just want you to know, and we'll make sure we're cleaning up back here.
Thank you very much.
And we'll take care of that before we go.
I'm very happy, and that's recyclable.
And we thank you for everything that you do to help keep our community clean, getting the word out, and, and, and everything that you do. Thank you so much.
I'm happy that I can do it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I pray the Lord will allow me to do it for many more years.
Amen to that.
Yeah, our next speaker is Caleb Smith.
Chairman, Board members, thank you for having me. My name is Caleb Smith, and I am from Congresswoman Elaine Loria's staff. Mr. McGlinnan had invited me to give a few remarks, so I just wanted to introduce myself to all of you. I've met a few of you before, and you've received my emails. And also introduce myself to the constituents of James City County, and let everyone know that our office on the Peninsula is open, and helping constituents with any federal agency needs they may have, whether that be expediting a passport during emergencies. Help with the IRS or Social Security is a big agency we help with, saving people money. I think we're up to $300,000 saved for constituents of Virginia's 2nd District. And so whether it be any federal issues, we're here to help. Politics aside, we're here to help the people here in Hampton Roads that live in our district. So I just want to take this chance to introduce myself to all of you. I hope to work with you in the future, and all the constituents here at James City County, as we love the Peninsula. And I am a native of the Peninsula, so I'm glad to be here, helping out everyone that I'm able to. So I just wanted to introduce myself again. Thank you.
Smith, would you mind giving a telephone number for your office down in?
And the address.
Yes, okay. So the address is 105 Professional Parkway, Yorktown, Virginia, and that's 23693. And the telephone number is 757-364-7634. And so visit the office anytime you want. We would ask that you make an appointment, as I'm the only one in the office. If I'm out at an event like this or somewhere else, I don't want someone to show up to an empty office. But please call, we're, our doors are open, and we're ready to help whoever we need to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Margaret Fowler, I had a second one from you. Did you have?
She left.
This is a duplicate, I guess. Mr. Neil Chalkley? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one. Kevin Lampke. Kevin Lampke.
I think that was the wrong.
Wrong form? Okay.
Yes, we had to speed ahead of them.
Okay. All right, let me move on then to Mr. Neil Chalkley.
Chairman, board members, thank you for having me here. I am president of Hotel Association and Hotelier in Williamsburg. I'm not going to reiterate what Ron Kirkland, my associate, said. I would like to add that we need to continue to encourage private investment. We need to continue to grow. The opportunity for us with private investment gives me the opportunity to hire, to hire someone, to hire the youth. With the continued growth of the hotel business and the tourism business, which is our mainstay, we need to support and continue to support that. We need to continue to support private investment. If not, then we stay where we're at, and we might as well freeze things where they're at and services where they're at. So I encourage you to vote for the waiver, for the height on the Busch Gardens to continue to encourage growth in the city and in Williamsburg. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chalkley. Okay, I think I have, I have the last two here, and I'll determine which one would like to go, Mr. Lampke or Suzy Chealy? Would you like to have?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Suzy Chealy, Director for Design and Engineering for Busch Gardens and Water Country USA. And I just wanted to follow up on some of the comments made at the May 14th meeting. First, we wanted to restate the importance of bringing new guest experiences to our parks each year. We continually look for opportunities to add innovative, high-quality attractions that will enhance family entertainment and positively impact the Williamsburg destination. Our neighbors and community are extremely important to us and have been for 44 years. As with all new attractions, we work closely with the community and Jame City County, and we will continue to do so in the foreseeable future. Offering guests new experiences is fundamental to our business. Ensuring each new addition is the right fit for the park while continuing to be a good neighbor is one of our guiding principles. As one of the region's largest employers and a major tax contributor, Busch Gardens contributes substantially to the community and the Commonwealth. New park investment ensures a new experience for millions of tourists who visit annually, which benefits the residents of Jame City County and the entire destination. At the request of the supervisors, we met with our Kings Mill neighbors for a second time to ensure we answered all questions. On June 6, we met with the Kings Mill Community Services Association, otherwise known as KCSA, to provide additional information related to the height waiver and to answer questions from residents who are unable to attend the May 6 KCSA meeting. To ensure we provided the best information to the residents, we contacted Jason Ross, who is the Director of Noise and Vibration Engineering for VHB's Boston office. He directed local VHB staff to take sound meter readings at Kings Mill's Harrop Glenn and Pierce's Court locations to compare those with the levels predicted in the Navcon engineering study discussed on May 14. Mr. Ross attended the Kings Mill meeting and was able to address the residents' questions. After studying all the data collected on non-operating days at Busch Gardens, and then again on Memorial Day Sunday, which is historically one of our busiest operating days, Mr. Ross assured us that the resulting effects to our neighbors in Kings Mill are again slightly lower than those from Mock Tower and Ver Bolton, validating that our prior engineering models were not just accurate, but were actually a little conservative. Based on these studies, and our sound consultant is confident that there will be no appreciable increase in sound within the Kings Mill with this new attraction. We appreciate your consideration of this important addition to Busch Gardens and the destination. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chealy. And our last one, Mr. Lampke, do you want to speak last? Or do you?
Good afternoon. Sorry about the confusion there on the sign up. You know, as we, as Suzy had mentioned, we were here, you know, a month ago. What I want to stress on our kind of proceedings and how we've addressed this over the, over the last couple of weeks, you know, we take the relationship very seriously, both with our partners here as well as our community. And you heard Suzy mention, sound engineers brought in from out of town. There's been multiple redesigns on the attraction itself, which we alluded to early on in the previous meeting. All of that comes with, with time and cost, of course, but to us, it's, it's an important priority. And, you know, the alternative, of course, is to push things through as would be, you know, maybe, maybe best for the park, but ultimately, we want to find the best compromise, and that's where we feel we've landed. It accomplishes the goals of the park, but while mitigating as much as possible the concerns that have been raised. So we've, we've acted in good faith, we've acted in a way that strives for compromise, and hopefully is, is viewed by this board as a way, a way forward. And I can't stress enough how diligent the team has been in that response, and it's something that we take very seriously. And we're, we're happy with the results. We like where we've landed. I think we've done our due diligence, and we look forward to a favorable outcome tonight. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Borman. That concludes our public comment for this evening. Next on our agenda is our consent calendar. Tonight's consent calendar consists of, number one, minutes adoption; number two, acceptance of fund Virginia forfeited asset sharing program for $757; acceptance of fund Virginia forfeited asset sharing program, $269; grant award, Virginia Fire Program's fund adjustment, $14,402; appropriation FEMA reimbursement, $93,824; contract award, Freedom of Information Act request software solution, $102,328; seven, dedication of streets and sections 1 and 2 of the Windsor Ridge subdivision; number eight is relocation of launchpad, the Greater Williamsburg Business Incubator; and number nine is memorandum of agreement on Greater Williamsburg Partnership Transition into Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance. And that's the consent calendar, and I'll look to the board if there's any one that wishes to have an item pulled.
Mr. Chairman, I don't wish to pull an item, but I do wish to make a disclosure. In relation to item number eight, I would note that I am an employee of the College of William &amp; Mary, and this does involve a contractual arrangement that includes the college and the county. I have no direct involvement in this particular project as a college employee, and I do feel I can render fair and impartial judgment in this case.
Okay, thank you. Motion for approval.
I was actually, sorry, I was actually going to ask about, not necessarily pulling the memorandum of agreement, but voting on it, but then if we could get a, I believe I saw Chris Johnson here, if we could just get a quick two, two-second what exactly it is, because I do think it's worth, worth comment. So I can pull it, or I can keep it on and?
Let's go ahead and pull it, and we'll, okay, so we have a, and that's, is that for number eight or?
Number nine.
Number nine, okay, number nine. So you have, we have a motion for approval.
Yes, a motion for approval, that's number eight.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, for number nine, Mr. Johnson.
I was just hoping that you could give a, a quick summary of what we're approving this evening.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before you this evening is a memorandum of agreement that has been drafted jointly by the three localities forming the Greater Partnership, Jame City County, York County, and the city of Williamsburg. Is a result of SB 942, the Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance has been undergoing a reorganization, splitting into two separate and distinct bodies, the Tourism Council and the Business Council. The memorandum before you tonight acknowledges that restructuring, reorganization into those two bodies, and Greater Williamsburg Partnership's transition into that organization underneath the Business Council. No changes in funding are associated with this resolution. It is merely an acknowledgement of the transition occurring, as well as authorizing the county administrator to make any necessary signatures on documents to effectuate that transition and change.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I would move for approval of that.
Do you have a motion for approval?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're down to our public hearings this evening, and as we begin this, I would like to introduce Mr. Tim O'Connor, who's our Planning Commission Representative, sitting in the back of the room. We'll be calling on him as we need through this, through our public hearings. The first one is amendment of an easement on 2511 and 2611 Forge Road, and acceptance of easement on 2822 Forge Road. Mr. Kinsman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. What Mr. Purse and I have presented before the board tonight is exactly that. It's an application by Mr. Woody Perry, Mr. Holly Smith, to amend an existing easement on 2511 and 2611 Forge Road, basically in exchange for establishing a new easement on 2822 Forge Road. We've set forth the various details of that exchange and removal of some of the restrictions of the easement in the staff memo. I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Purse is here as well to answer any questions. I believe the, all the applicants are here too.
Just one quick question. It's my understanding this is basically just a trade, in essence, kind of sort of.
Yes, it's, it's the details that are set forth in the staff memo. You are, if you accepted this, you would be accepting some additional houses that weren't permitted on 2511, 2611 Forge Road in exchange for fewer houses that would normally be permitted on 2822, and establishment of a setback easement from Forge Road.
Other questions for staff? A public hearing? We have, first one, Mr. David Odie.
Chairman, members of the board, I'm David Odie. I live at 109 Peter Lyall. Thank you for hearing us tonight. I represent Mr. Woody Perry and Mr. Holly Smith, who are both here. Also, I'd like to introduce a new addition to my firm, Mr. Bill Bray. I think this is his first Board of Supervisors meeting. Mr. Perry developed Willow Pond Estates. I hope you've seen it out on, on Forge Road. It's a six-lot subdivision. It's got private roads lined by magnolia trees. It's, it's a, it's a beautiful development. Mr. Smith owns the property adjacent to it, and their plan is to extend the, the idea, the, the look of Willow Pond onto the Smith property. But it has this easement on it that only permits one house. And so the proposal is that, that you modify the existing easement to allow more homes on that site in exchange for a reduction in the permitted homes on the Meadows property across the street. I think that currently allows nine houses, and the proposal is for there to be three very large lots on that setback quite ways from, from, from Forge Road. So it should serve the county's purposes. Mr. Smith, I think, has some comments to make about it. He's the visionary, I think, and so if you have any questions, me, I'll answer them, but this is his.
Mr. Smith.
Board, good evening. William &amp; Mary, and actually basketball, brought me to Williamsburg, and my wife and I both attended the college and, in fact, lived after school here for years and years, including out on Forge Road for five years, loving the farm ambiance, the outdoor nature, allowing our children to be able to experience that. And so a pride for the Greater Williamsburg area, for Jame City County, and an opportunity to contribute to that by adding additional conservation while maintaining the, the farm appeal and, and style of Forge Road. So it would be a privilege, and you have before you our, our idea and our proposal that we're excited about. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last of our speaker cards, so I'll close the public hearing and look to the board for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one comment, and that, that is that I think this is a good opportunity for us to add to the scenic vista that would be preserved on Forge Road. I did notice in the, in the staff report, and I hope that this might be also a signal of some kind about what we are looking for in terms of PDR. And I guess I would have to say that, to me, this is a one-off case, and that, that I would evaluate it on that basis, as opposed to really reflecting the priorities that we might want to eventually establish for a PDR program. But I'm going to be happy to support this.
And I'll speak a little bit. As y'all all know, I love Forge Road, and want to keep it as rural and scenic view as possible down through there. Of course, there's always going to be some type of development pressure somewhere, but I think it's a, it's a step in the right direction of what we're looking for, what the community's looking for, and what Forge Road is looking for as far as keeping that rural character. You know, we don't have the, the farm that we used to have, but this is another way of utilizing that land, swap one for one, move the houses back further off the road, and keep that vista and that, that view shed that we're looking for down on Forge Road.
Yeah, I would just say this, this is part of, I think it divides our district, so it is a beautiful area. And it's my understanding there's not any additional taxpayer funding involved in this, so I'm happy to support this, this evening.
Yeah, I just appreciate the thought that went into, when, when you were trying to do the two and to do the compromise of lessening on the other side, so thank you for that.
And I will be happy to support it. I was very pleased to see that what we're doing is essentially reducing by one the number of lots available and preserving a considerable boundary on Forge Road on literally another lot that's about the same size. We go from about 120 to about 240 acres, which will have big scenic buffers along, along the road, so. And, and as Larson said, at the same cost we had for the first one, so this is a real win-win, and I'll be glad to support it.
And, Mr. Smith, you don't have any NCAA eligibility left, do you? We might need you this year.
I'd like to make, like to make a motion for approval.
Do we have a motion?
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, our second one is SUP 19-009, 4897 Long Hill Road, King of Glory Lutheran Church Expansion. Mr. Thomas Lenninger, come and speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Mr. Chase Grog of Landtag Resources has applied for a special use permit to allow for expansion of 19,000 square feet to the existing church building. The new expansion will include 4,604 square foot sanctuary to seat 500 to 550 people at the King of Glory Lutheran Church site located at 4897 Long Hill Road. The property is Zoned R2 General Residential, designated a low-density residential, and is located inside the primary service area. The new facility will include administrative offices, a nursery, gathering spaces, and an enlarged kitchen. The existing sanctuary will be remodeled to add six classrooms for the preschool. The expanded facility will allow for more flexibility to support the proposed Neighborhood Resource Center. This proposal will include additional parking to support all three uses. The place of public assembly, school, and Neighborhood Resource Center are all specially permitted uses in the R2 zoning district. Currently, King of Glory utilizes Founder's Hall and the existing sanctuary for three services each Sunday. The church currently provides preschool for students ages 2 through 6. This proposal will increase their total parking by 155 spaces. The existing parking lot will be brought closer into conformance with the current zoning ordinance. Existing parking spaces will be removed from the community character corridor buffer, and the buffer will be increased by 368 square feet. Previously, this property received multiple SUPs between 2000 and 2012 to allow for construction of a modular building, purchase adjacent property to expand their use, and previous church expansions. Improvements included in the Long Hill Road corridor widening project will mitigate the additional traffic impacts associated with this expansion. VDA has reviewed and recommended approval, and that there be continued coordination between the two projects. Staff finds this... Staff finds this proposal to be compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance. At its May 1st, 2019 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this application and acceptance of the conditions by a vote of five to zero. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve of this application, subject to the proposed conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time, and the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
I have one. I think it's the case, is it not the case that the Long Hill expansion, Long Hill improvements are going to include a traffic circle at Williamsburg Plantation?
Yes, that's correct.
And so will the church also be utilizing access onto that traffic circle? I'm just out of curiosity.
Yes, access will be, there'll be two points of access, one through the roundabout, and there's one closer to 199. That'll be a right turn only.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Connor, do you want to come forward and talk about the Planning Commission's consideration?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Nothing really to add to this. Mr. Lenninger covered it very well. It was a pretty straight up-and-down vote for the Planning Commission, but happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thanks.
I'll open the public hearing, and we have no cards, so I will close the public hearing and look to the board for discussion.
Well, first of all, I just, this church has expanded, I believe, a couple of times, and so it's a very healthy congregation, and I appreciate that that is happening to them. I did have concerns over the traffic, but I'm hopeful with the Long Hill expansion that that will help tremendously in that area, so I will be supporting it. I'm happy to make a motion unless others have commented. Okay, I will move the approval.
Just to add, you know, I've had the good fortune to see the church in action in terms of community involvement and support for various enterprises and applaud their good work, and obviously the addition of a Community Resource Center is an indication of that.
Do we have a motion?
Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next on our agenda is Z19-007, MP 18-0004, Forest Heights Proffer and Master Plan Amendment. Mr. Weisong?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the board. Mr. Doug Harbin of Wayne Harbin Builder Incorporated has applied on behalf of the Salvation Army to amend the adopted proffers and master plan for Forest Heights to allow for the addition of up to 46 townhouses, a mini-storage facility, and a residential dwelling unit for a caretaker on the 11.42 acre property currently owned by the Salvation Army. This property is located within the primary service area of James City County and is designated for low-density residential use within the Comprehensive Plan. The portion of Richmond Road that abuts this property is designated as a community character corridor within that same plan. To provide a little bit of history on the property, the county actually initiated a rezoning of Forest Heights in 2011 from R2 General Residential to mixed-use with proffers. The purpose of this rezoning was to facilitate improvements to the existing neighborhood and allow the Salvation Army to build new offices, a community meeting space and gym, and other accessory uses. As a result of the rezoning, the Forest Heights neighborhood was improved with the realignment and paving of Forest Heights Road and Neighbors Drive, the addressing of uncontrolled drainage and stormwater runoff, and the rehabilitation of existing housing, to name a few accomplishments. The uses proposed by the Salvation Army on the 11.42 acre property have not been developed in today's vacant and is the subject of this application. The applicant is proffering for 100% of the 46 townhouses to be offered at prices in accordance with the county's housing opportunity policy. This exceeds the 20% that is required by that policy. The applicant has also provided cash proffers in accordance with the county's cash proffer policy for schools for each dwelling unit, as well as cash-in lieu for the parks and rec facilities that could not be located on-site due to constraints. The applicant is also proffering design guidelines and building elevations for the townhouses and the self-storage facility. At its May 1st, 2019 regular meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning application by a vote of four to one, with the provision that the applicant develop building elevations and revise design guidelines for the self-storage facility. The Planning Commission also recommended that the Board of Supervisors not apply the mixed-use construction phasing policy for this project. Since this meeting, the applicant has worked closely with planning staff to develop building elevations and design guidelines for the self-storage facility. The proposed layout of the self-storage facility provides a continuous facade ringing the perimeter of the facility with architectural treatments and enhanced landscape plannings that would better shield the interior of the site from view. The revised design standards better align with the Comprehensive Plan's goal of preserving and enhancing the CCC. While the staff finds the offering of affordable housing to be supported by the Comprehensive Plan and that the design guidelines, elevations, and revised layout of the self-storage facility to be more closely aligned to the Comprehensive Plan than at the Planning Commission stage, staff is still unable to recommend approval of this project. This is due to the fact that, as proffered, this project does not align with the board adopted mixed-use construction phasing policy. As proffered, approximately 75% of residential development could be constructed before commercial construction even begins, which is a significant departure from the 10% which is permitted by the phasing policy. Staff is not comfortable recommending approval of a project that contradicts a board adopted policy. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and the applicant is available as well. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
I've got a queue. Mr. Weisong, first of all, welcome to James City County. I understand you've joined us recently from Orange County?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Great to have you. I appreciate the responses you've given to some of these questions, but I did want to ask them publicly so that we have some information out on the table about the areas of concern. The first is on the phasing policy, and that is a concern that we would normally anticipate that at a very early stage in the process, we would begin to see the construction of the commercial portion of this mixed-use project. Is that right?
Correct.
And where would that begin? Just if you could take us through that for a second?
The construction phasing policy?
Yes.
So the way that the mixed-use construction phasing policy is written, building permits for up to 10% of the residential units can be issued prior to commencing any commercial construction, and at that point, certificates of occupancy must be issued for at least 25% of the commercial square footage, as shown on the master plan, prior to building permits being issued for any residential unit above 50% of the total proposed units, as shown on the master plan. So to stop there, there's no, since 2011, the master plan has always shown the non-residential uses to be located on the Salvation Army, so that phasing would start to kick in with this phase of the development.
So as currently proposed, the amendment would indicate that this would be proffered as totally affordable housing within our housing opportunity policy, which means that, as I understand it, four homes would be available for, if they were purchased, $212,618 or less, and that would be the low end of the spectrum, so four of the 46 would have to be done at that level.
So the way that the hot policy is constructed, the 20% of residential units are required, and then within that 20%, there's specific percentages for different price ranges?
Right.
So for the lowest of the low, which is 30% to 60% of area median income, the price range is actually $93,138 to $212,000, and $618.
So as long as it fell anywhere within that $93,000 to $212,000, it would meet the requirement?
Yes, a minimum of four units are required by the hot policy, and the applicant has proffered four units for that range.
And then the next category would be for those who have between a 60 and 80% of the average median income?
Correct.
And that would be from $212,000 plus to about where?
$243,260.
And that would be four units, once again, would be required at that level?
That would actually be three units, and the applicant has proffered four.
Okay. And then the remaining units would fall somewhere between the 30% level and 120%, and so at the high end, I believe the number you had was about $372,000?
Yes.
For that unit? And we're calling this affordable housing. I guess, you know, that's part of, it's not really a question for you, it's just kind of an observation, but the real question I would have here is, the alternative is rental that's provided in the amended master plan, and under that provision, how exactly would this work in terms of calculating rents and determining proffers? Because in the case of purchase, we would say that for that lower group, the 30% to 60%, they would be exempt from any proffers, correct?
Yes, the, well, they have proffers, but there's a 100% reduction for cash proffers.
And then for the next group, the $212,000 to $243,000, that would be a reduction of 70%?
60%.
60%?
Yes, sir.
And then the last group would have, would qualify for a reduction of 30%?
Correct.
Okay. So with rental, how does that work exactly? Because it's, you know, you're not dealing with the purchase price of a home, but rather rental costs presumably.
The hot policy actually requires for rental units, there's a 30-year lease that's worked out, and there's not a differentiation in terms of the reduction in cash proffers. So essentially, my understanding is that rental units are treated similar to housing units that are going to be purchased when it comes to cash reduction.
So I, but I'm trying to figure out how that works exactly in terms of calculating what the proffers would actually be?
It would be the rental equivalency so that someone wasn't spending more than 30% of their income on housing. So we would go out and check the rental rates. There's a requirement in the hot policy for those rental rates to be reported every year, and again, that would be the rental rate that would fall within that 30 to 60, 60 to 80, or the 120.
So could units change in value over time?
Rental rates would be, would need to be under hot policy. The rental rates would have to be reported to the county each year.
Right.
So, and there's also another provision in there that those rental rates would have to stay within those ranges.
They would have to stay within, for each of those units, they would have to stay within that range?
Correct.
Okay. And so then, and then we calculate the value of the proffer would be based on that initial calculation of where the rents fall?
Correct.
Okay. And is there a difference in terms of the amount of the proffer in rental versus purchased units?
None of the proffer is based on structure type, not the ownership form.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I think that answers that question. The next question I would have simply, this, if we approved a proposal that allowed for the sale or rental of these units, you know, we all know that this is being brought to us by a particular applicant who has a very good reputation in the community, but for whatever reason, that property could be sold the next day, and everything that's included in this proposal would be included in that as well, correct?
That is correct. The proffers in the master plan and legislative action would run with the land and is not applicant-specific.
Okay. And I think, I think I'll stop with that for this point, at this point. All right. Thank you, Mr. Weisong. We'll invite Mr. O'Connor up to talk about the Planning Commission.
Good evening again. So probably a little more unique master plan amendment than we've seen in the past, simply because we've got a number of property owners that are involved. When this first came to the Planning Commission, you know, we thought it was going to be the Salvation Army. They've since relocated, and I'm sure Mr. Getty will speak to that. So, you know, as Planning Commission, we didn't have the benefit of the architectural drawings, which I believe you have in your package this evening, and I think what it boiled down to for most of us on the Planning Commission was that ability to keep that 82 split for mixed-use in the square footage and the limited options, recognizing that there was abundant retail just up the road a little bit in Lightfoot Corridor. So again, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the application four to one, with the recommendation to set aside the phasing policy, which I'm sure Mr. Getty will speak to as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, could, would you mind giving me a little bit more of a sense of what the Planning Commission's view, reason for setting aside the policy was?
So from our understanding with the discussion with the applicant, based on how they were financing the project, they wanted to finance it as a residential component and a commercial component, so they wanted that ability to construct them separate and independently. So that's how we rolled with it.
But, I mean, question is not, you know, what's convenient for the applicant, but rather what's consistent with county policy? I mean, was there, was there no concern about that?
There was, but again, I think understanding what we felt the constraints of the master plan were on this, we wanted to engage the developer in that and give them some latitude, understanding that ultimately it's up to the Board of Supervisors to make the variance to the policy.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Mr. O'Connor? I will open the public hearing, and our first speaker is Mr. Vernon Getty. He's working real hard on trying to get this thing. Their technology challenges.
I happen to bring a flash drive for just such an emergency. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Vernon Getty. It's my pleasure to be here tonight representing Wayne Harbin Builder. The Harbins are all here as well, and Doug Harbin will address you shortly when I'm done my remarks. Wayne Harbin Builder is a family-owned business based on Strawberry Plains Road in the county, and it was formed in 1985 by Mr. Wayne Harbin and is now run by his two sons, Doug and Brad. All right, we're missing something here, but this property is 11.42 acres, and as you know, is now owned by the Salvation Army. The staff report describes the existing mixed-use zoning of this property, and clearly this is a very unusual zoning. This was, project was never intended to be a traditional mixed-use development like you would see in a new town or other similar development. In fact, the county itself selected the mixed-use zoning district, and our understanding, the reason for that was to take advantage of the flexibility in the mixed-use zoning district with respect to setbacks and other things to allow the redevelopment of Forest Heights to work, and it has worked, and that's been a great success. That part of the project has worked beautifully. The Salvation Army has decided not to build their facilities here. In fact, it purchased another site over on Ironbound Road and need to sell the property. So the development contemplated by the existing master plan on this piece of the property is not going to take place. The applicant is building in the first phase of Forest Heights, has houses underway on Neighbors Drive, and saw this as an opportunity to provide a quality, affordable workforce housing project in the county. You can see how the property all works together. The first phase of the project, the existing redevelopment is here, Salvation Army property is here, and the balance of the property is here, owned by five individuals and... is here, and the balance of the property is here, owned by five individuals and not a part of this application. The applicant proposes 46 townhomes on just under seven acres and a self-storage facility of up to 250 units on just under three acres. They've looked at any number of layouts. Doug has actually been working on this proposal for going on two years now. But the most recent idea for here was that there would be a 40-unit senior living facility in a 6,000-square-foot commercial building on the 2.97 acres in the front. Unfortunately, staff pointed out to us, that proposal wouldn't meet the 80/20 requirement of the mixed-use zoning ordinance, in that the entire 2.97 acres needs to be put to a non-residential use. So they went back to the drawing board and came up with the idea of the self-storage facility there, which is an economically feasible use for them to build. It's a low-impact use for the property. It doesn't generate traffic noise, some of the adverse impacts you often get from commercial development, and it's something the applicant would plan to build themselves. And you can see, working with staff, as Thomas described, the layout is to ring the thing with buildings and to screen the interior, and then the townhouse development in the back here. See the community character buffer and other internal buffers and open space highlighted here. As Tim has mentioned, the planning commission recommended approval of this project, conditioned upon us working with staff and coming up with elevations and design guidelines for the mini-storage. We did that, and Doug has done that throughout the process, working with staff and coming up with, addressing whatever issues have been put out there. John Hopkey prepared the guidelines and elevations that are proffered, and you have in your package tonight. You'll see the use of architectural features, different colors and materials to break up the facade of the building. And of course, it's a community character corridor, so there'd be enhanced landscaping in that buffer as well. If you go down the street just a bit and look at the buildings at the premier outlet, you'll see the long buildings that face Richmond Road. At this point, with a mature buffer, you can barely see them, but it'd be a similar look, and they use similar architectural features to break up the long expanse of building. The remaining issue we've dealt with staff on is this construct mixed-use phasing policy. The applicant has offered a proffer in a good-faith attempt to address phasing while leaving the project financeable and viable for a small business. And we would submit to you that, given the unique nature of this zoning, this mixed-use zoning in this project, that the strict application of the policies neither necessary or appropriate. Close to 60% of the project has already been built with no phasing requirement and no non-residential development. And frankly, we're not aware of any project in the county that's developed in compliance with this policy, that didn't take credit for already-built commercial that was adjacent to it. And of course, you heard from Tim, the planning commission recommended that the board not hold this project to the terms of that policy. We agree with much, I would say 95% of the staff report, pretty much everything except the conclusion. This project is consistent with the land use and density provisions of the comprehensive plan. Project will increase the supply of quality-for-sale housing in the county. 100% of the homes will comply with the HOP policy and help meet the pressing need in the county for quality, affordable housing. Project has no adverse impacts on surrounding development or zoning. There are no traffic issues involved in it. It's consistent with the county's parks and recreation policy, provides pedestrian connectivity. There are no cultural or environmental issues. The applicant is offering cash proffers in accordance with your proffer policies. The project meets the adequate public schools facility test. And Doug has gone out and walked the neighborhood, talked to neighbors, and at least thus far, knock on wood, there's been no public opposition or controversy about this case. We would submit to you that the positive aspects and benefits to all the county, the Salvation Army, and the applicant merit an approval of this policy. We would ask you to approve the applications. Doug would like to speak for a moment. I'd be glad to answer questions now.
Questions for Mr. Getty?
Both would be glad to answer them after Mr. Harbin speaks.
Thank you. Mr. Doug Harbin is next.
Good evening, evening to the board, members of the board. I'm Doug Harbin with Wayne Harbin Builder. I want to first start by, start off by giving you some background about my company and what we've done for affordable and workforce housing throughout James City County. We, as a company, were chosen back in 2008 to be a part of the Ironbound Redevelopment Project to build homes for first-time homebuyers and build a product that was affordable. This was a real success for the county and a real revitalization for that area, and the ability to give a chance for first-time homebuyers to have homeownership. We've built a total of seven homes in Ironbound Square, and we're currently building on the final lot in Ironbound Redevelopment Project. We've also built one home in Toanna Trace, one home in Forest Heights, and we just finished a home on Neighbor's Drive, and currently have one under construction now on Neighbor's Drive. We've also done over five help projects for the county to improve our communities. We've also built five new homes for Habitat since 2006. We also worked with the Office of Housing and Community Development with the guidelines for some of the projects that, some of the projects like the Neighbor's Drive project and so. We, as a company, realize the importance of affordable housing and first-time homeownership. That's why we saw an opportunity to continue the effort with the project on the Salvation Army site. Once the Neighbor's Drive project is done and the home on Ironbound is complete, I believe the county has no more new projects on the books. So we, so I felt this project would be beneficial to fill a gap and allow us to work with the Office of Housing and Community Development on applicants seeking new homes. The last lot in Ironbound, obviously, the last lot's always the hardest. It was brought to us and after they had gone to a couple of the builders wanting to know if they could build a home for the price range to get, to get a new applicant in that project. Nobody could do it. We chose to take a shot, and we're, just keep our fingers crossed we break even. So, you know, a lot of what we do, you know, is not just, you know, we're a company, we have to make money. I mean, unfortunately. But a lot of what we do is to get back to the community, and, you know, they've been so great to our company. So, so again, you know, any of these opportunities, you know, we take those in stride. We, Salvation Army property was part of a rezoning that included 47 acres. The project, which was intended to help bring the existing property into compliance with the zoning ordinance and improve Forest Heights neighborhood when the rezoning took place. The county did not have the phasing policy in place. The phasing policy is a hard policy for a small builder or developer to adhere to since the financial obligations have become so strict in obtaining financing. The mixed-use designation only allows for builders or developers that have unlimited amounts of funds to take advantage of this mixed-use zoning. We've asked the planning staff for other projects that have been required to adhere to this phasing policy, and we believe that there are no other projects at this time that are required to adhere to the policy that don't already have existing structures that were used as part of that. We've tried to comply the best we can, but feel it would be very difficult to do both residential and the storage buildings at the same time. I've been working on this project for over a year. That's with the staff. I've actually been working on this project almost two years. And worked with the staff to come up with a plan that would meet the zoning requirements and the best use of the land. As we worked on the project, just about every person felt residential would be the best use for the property, since the Forest Heights project was adjacent to the property, and that would be all residential. But the zoning would not allow, based on the mixed-use ratio, to have this property all residential. I looked at an assisted living facility and went to several developers of an assisted living facilities, and no one had any interest because of the location and the saturation, at least what they told me, the saturation of the market for the assisted living. I went to the DRC and had proposed doing a small commercial site with an independent senior living facility, but then, but that use was residential, so that wouldn't work for an independent senior living facility. The Bay Aging Complex on Ironbound has a waiting list to get in. It would have been a perfect match, but again, due to the 80/20 mix, we couldn't do it. The storage buildings were proposed based on the commercial aspect of the mixed-use zoning policy, and we feel like this would be the best commercial use due to the neighborhood-type setting of the project. This location is not suitable for retail, and that generates a lot of traffic. Again, we're looking at a lower traffic count because, again, we've got to have a commercial to meet the mixed-use zoning regulation. The storage facility, we work with the planning staff and John Hopkey, with Hopkey and Associates to come up with a great facade to keep with the historic character of the area and mask any negative concerns of the storage facility. The Salvation Army has decided to relocate to another site, so I feel we've come up with a great plan, which has the vision of the county to help a neighborhood revitalize and have more affordable housing. I feel we have met the intent of the mixed-use zoning for this property and have worked with staff to make the storage facility architecturally pleasing. The positives of this project surely outweigh the negatives. I ask the board to vote to approve this application.
Something Doug said triggered one thought. This application actually generates less than half the traffic that was, been projected from the Salvation Army existing master plan development. So it really is a low-impact proposal.
Any further questions for Mr. Getty? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Mr. James Beavers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name's James Beavers. I've lived in James City County for just over 12 years. In that 12 years, I've worked on every project that Doug just mentioned to you guys. And I just want to emphasize the direct positive impact that each one of those affordable housing projects has on the residents that live in those or were able to purchase those homes. So really quick comment, but I ask that you approve this application because I think it will further positively impact the community. Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker is Mr. William Pritchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and all the board members. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here today and speak on behalf of Forest Heights. I've been a resident of James City for 29 years and very proud to say this is a wonderful home. I am familiar with the Harbins, they have built houses for me. I know that the quality of material they use, as well as the labor they use, is far superior to many, many builders, especially track builders. And the fact that they're willing to step forward and do this speaks highly on their behalf and as well as for James City County. And I just, just hope that such a neighborhood might even improve and bring more diversity to this region. I thank you so very much for the opportunity to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. Next speaker is Mr. Wayne Harbin.
I think this is the first time I've ever been in front of y'all. I know your faces, some of you. The, I think the biggest thing, and Doug's brought it forward, is we want to give back to the community. We've been fortunate enough to build in all the great neighborhoods that James City County has and afforded some wonderful people and done it since 1985. So going back and doing Habitat and some of the other homes that we've built, this right here falls right in line. And so many times, we have people call our office that need affordable housing. And as you know, the price of lots and things that are today, they're not there. And it's, it's so hard that we can't reach these people. The other part that I see is we're not looking to take and cut down all these trees and different things. This has already been approved for residential, and unfortunately, the mixed-use is put in. And I hope you understand, in the mixed-use part, we don't have, we're bound so much by borrowing money, and by doing so, we have to have revenue coming in and projects being completed before we can borrow money for this mixed-use deal. So part of it with the banks that we've talked to is we have to have some of the residential done before they give us, they don't give us just what we want to do. They've got to see amount of work going forward to be able to start some of this mixed-use to comply with the zoning. So I hope you, it's a little bit, that's kind of the twixt that I see in this whole deal, is that mixed-use, and Doug's come up with a wonderful plan we're trying to do, and we plan on doing it ourselves. It's not something we want to sell or whatever. We want to take and bring that under umbrella as well. So we have complete control of the whole project. So we hope that you'll approve so we can build these homes. Thank you.
Sir. The last speaker is Mr. Brad Harbin.
Members of the board, I guess the last thing I just wanted to hit on was the possibility that people made me nervous about storage buildings, you know, in that area on Route 60. And I just want to kind of go through and, and, you know, tell you that what we've done to make it the best possible look that we can. We've hired, you know, Hopkey and Associates, and they've come up with a wonderful plan. And, you know, from the outside, it looks no different than the facade on the outlets just down the street, you know? And with that, you've got to look at the facade, and it doesn't matter what's going on behind it. Yes, it is storage units, but on their drive pass, their drive into the neighborhood, it makes no difference. You don't see it unless you see the sign. So I just want to assure you that it's a good-looking plan. It's at the front of the neighborhood, so we've got to make sure that it looks the best. So I just want to make sure if it was something in your head that you're nervous and say, hey, it's another, you know, storage building coming in. There's plenty of bad-looking storage buildings around. We don't need to duplicate it. So I assure you that it'll be the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's our last speaker. I will close the public hearing and look to the board for discussion.
All right, I'll, I'll start off, being in the same field as the Harbins and knowing their work and their reputation and what they've done for the community. I applaud you for all your hard work and your efforts and everything you've done in James City County and throughout our community to make it a better community. Thank you very much for, and your reputation is definitely stellar for the work you do. You know, a lot of times, we have these projects come up in front of us, and we have a lot of people that speak on the opposite side. I haven't seen one tonight, and I don't think there was one in the planning commission that spoke against this project. I think it's a project that works well in the community. I think it's a project that we can use for our toolbox as far as, you know, we're looking for apartments, we're looking for new homes, we're looking for townhouses, we're looking for a lot of affordability. And where this is located is not far from the mall that needs workers. And where this is located is not far from the mall that needs workers. So, it's not a long travel distance for workers to be able to get to a job and do the jobs that we're looking for. And a lot of them, we can't afford to pay but so much for some of these retail jobs, and this affordability will help the people that are working in retail trying to move themselves forward. With, you know, we've lately had a lot of our local builders have kind of gone by the wayside, and we've talked about this in different board meetings and all that, how to support our local builders and what we can do for our local builders. Of course, we can't go out there with local builders and say, hey, we're going to give you a chunk of money, but if you're willing to take on a project like this, and I know with being just two-years difference in the amount of time we've both been in business, I know what it takes to, you know, fund a project and get the money moving and get everybody paid while this projects. So, you know, I look at some of that as far as, you know, what can go first and what can go second, because the banks are, the banks are controlling you, and they're telling you, hey, we need this. And of course, we tell you, we need this, and you kind of get stuck in the middle. So, I applaud you for trying to take on this project and make it something better for James City County. I like the mixed-use, and I know we've said, hey, we need this mixed-use. We've set that in there. It's in our plans and all that. So, that kind of stumbled a little bit as far as trying to figure out, well, what mixed-use can we afford? What mixed-use can we do in-house? And what mixed-use can we put in the project that we could actually make some money? And end of the day, of course, all of us need to make some money. So, you know, that's another part that is, it's tough unless you do this type of business. It's hard to understand all the pitfalls, and I guess that's why there's less and less of us than there used to be. But I looked at the buildings and all that, and John Hopkey does a great job on his buildings and his architectural designs and all that. And I really like the look of this building, the way it looks, and it's kind of hidden. You wouldn't know all that's in there, you know, the way it's designed and all. So, applaud you for how you've got that designed and how you've worked that out. But I'm, I'm gonna, I normally don't tell before I get, you know, to the end of it, but I'll be moving in favor of this tonight.
So, I have two concerns, and it's really, I don't have a concern over the Harvins, because everything that I have seen that you've done, and in fact, you just did a pool house in my neighborhood, which was, the site was clean, and there's just no, there's no trouble at all, which I think speaks tremendously about your company, because very rarely does a neighborhood project go without a lot of opinions about what's going on there. So, my concern is not with the builder. My concern is with the fact that mixed-use is a storage unit, and we have that by another townhouse. And it, as much and as beautiful as the drawings are, it's, and I realize, storage units are needed, but that should not be what people have to look at when they come out of their residence, and nor should, that to me is not mixed-use. That's a residential with a storage unit. And so, I'm frustrated that that was your option. And I am also concerned about the number of schoolchildren. I think it's too low. And we've done Oakland Point, which is going to be feeding into Norg. We have this that is going to be feeding into Norg. And so, and it, we are showing Norg's numbers creeping up. And so, I, those are my two concerns over this project. It's not my, I have no concerns over the people that are doing the project. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Up and right, isn't it? I, I think that, I think this is going to add an affordable housing component that we're obviously looking for in our community. But the thing I like about it is that it's in an area where the access is much easier to get in and out of. And I like the fact that it's right there at our retail outlets. The School Point, I understand that point, and I have concerns about that as well. The thing that I have great hope is that while we're looking at our future schools, that we're going to be having some, hopefully, some future discussions about what we're going to be doing with maybe Bright Beginnings and that sort of thing to free up some of our elementary classrooms. So, with that recent directive to start looking into that sort of thing, I'm hoping that that's gonna, that that might alleviate some of that issue. I appreciate the fact that it would have less trafficked, less of a traffic impact, as you mentioned, than what was previously planned for. And as I said, I think that this particular location, I think, is going to be much safer to get in and out of than some of the ones we voted on the recent past. So, with that, I will be supporting this proposal this evening because I do feel that this is something that we need for our community.
So, not your fault, but this is a mess, okay? We're dealing with a very unusual kind of situation, and unfortunately, we have some policies that I don't think accurately reflect the intent of this board at least. So, for instance, we have a policy that helps us to understand how many schoolchildren to expect from a particular development. It's not an accurate indicator. I don't think there's any way to believe that what may at one time have accurately reflected the kind of output of schoolchildren from townhouse developments is reflective of what we are likely to see today. Because of the kind of nature of the policies and practices and directions that exist in this particular instance, the problem I have is that I'd like to minimize the confusion about what it is we're approving. And so, the issue of if this is intended to be for sale, let's just say it's for sale. Let's not muddy the water with the potential for it to be a rental proposal. If we are going to expect 20% of some kind of non-residential use, then let's identify what that 20% is going to be. And I understand that the storage units fit the commercial definition, but they're not 20% of the land. And so, I'd like to figure that out. And I heard something tonight that I hadn't heard before, which was that we haven't identified cases where our policy has actually been implemented. And so, I'd like more information about that before we went too far in terms of saying that this policy on phasing shouldn't still be operative. So, you know, I, again, like my colleagues, I know nothing but good things about the folks who are applying here. I always have to condition it on the notion that we have had people with sterling reputations come before us, and their proposals have been very good, and then the property is sold, and the product that arrives is not the same. And so, just, you know, getting more comfort with this particular project is something that would make me feel a lot better about the notion that this is the right thing for this particular place. I'm not there yet.
I would like to start with a question of staff, because it, I remember when we did this mixed-use, and it didn't dawn on me until I saw one of the slides that this is not the balance of that community. There are, those five lot owners who have the additional property on up are considered part of the mixed-use. So, there is no, I get the feeling that there is no real effective master plan for the whole community, because we're, it's being incrementally developed from what was existing there when we started. And it's very clear that the reason we went to a mixed-use was to get the setbacks, to make this project work, to improve that community, because it sorely, sorely needed it. It was convenient that we had the Salvation Army there, because that gave us a real known for that part of the process. But I'm a little concerned now that after this, what next? Will the next property owner have to do some commercial as well? And I'm just like, if you maybe try to reassure me a little bit about the process that we went through and what we could face in the future.
Really, just in short and in summary, again, I would agree with the statement that this is a very unique mixed-use master plan and development. This was not a greenfield development. This was not a mixed-use development that came in from scratch. I think the mixed-use zoning district at the time did make sense for the county-led redevelopment efforts that were taking place in that existing neighborhood. And if you recall, and if memory serves, the history of this was that that was a county-initiated rezoning. And so, there was a master plan to the degree that there were the existing homes and the redevelopment plan in place for the properties on the east and the, sort of in this, the middle piece of property that we're talking about tonight, there was a master plan in place for the Salvation Army piece. For the five lots, I think that still exist on the western edge of this mixed-use district, they are very long and very narrow. I would doubt that any one of them by themselves has development potential that could meet the mixed-use zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance itself has that requirement for no more than one single land use taking up more than 80%. So, unless the ordinance itself change, changes, that's not something that staff could take into consideration. The phasing policy is really the only one that could be subject to adjustment by the board. But again, there is no master plan component that I'm aware of for those last five long linear properties. So, you know, there would, at some point, need to be some action to establish the vision for that, and at that point, it would likewise need to meet the requirements of the mixed-use zoning ordinance.
Were any of those five properties developed?
They're older, single-family homes.
There are single, existing, single-family homes on all of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How does that impact the overall mixed-use area? In other words, as long as it stays single-family homes over there, I guess that just sort of counts, sort of like the ones we...
It's an existing condition.
So, the 2011 reselling master plan envisioned there being institutional use on the Salvation Army property. And then, there are those existing five skinny residential lots. But the thinking would be that potentially in the future, those lot lines could be reorganized if the property owners wish to, and that future development could go out there. What's tricky about the master plan now is that there's existing single-family residential uses on those lots, and I don't believe the applicant has spoken to those property owners about potentially changing property lines to create a more buildable envelope. So, the analysis has been looking at the developable area of the entire master plan, which is the 47.1 acres. And I believe the developable area is 32.8 acres. And so, the breakdown then by use looks at single-family residential, which is existing, multifamily residential, which is being proposed, this proposed self-storage facility, and then in the future, some potential non-residential use farther up inside the master plan.
Okay. So, those five lots essentially now are legally non-conforming, correct?
Ours is the mixed-use.
Ours is the mixed-use, yeah. They don't meet the, okay. The, yeah, yeah, I'll come back. We'll come back to you one more time. I guess my other question had to do with the affordable housing policy. I echo Mr. McGlinnan's concern about whether we have an opportunity for rental versus sale, and I guess potentially, if the way it's written, it could be a mix. And so, that, it creates some unique problems for us, because I guess the figures of the housing, you know, that we're looking at, eat our affordable policy. But there's nothing, there's no soft second mortgage or anything associated with it. There is, in my mind, is there is no, if the house gets sold, you know, the second buyer, it goes at market rate. So, there, you know, it's, the question is, if they're for-sale houses, how do we keep them at affordable without letting the market? And this is no reflection on the builder or anybody else. This is just the reality of the market. I mean, you know, it gets built, it gets sold, if there's no other restriction on it, it gets priced out of the market. Is that, that's a fair assessment?
Correct. Unless there's a soft second, then there would not be that commitment for that 50-year requirement on a soft second. But if the price point sells to where there is no soft second, that trigger doesn't kick in.
Thank you. That's all I needed from staff on that. I just wanted to ask. I've got a question for staff, if you don't mind. Go ahead. Going back to originally, when all this was put together, some research I was doing, it looked like that we ended up making this mixed-use in order for roads and lots and all that to be maneuvered and changed so that we could do what we needed to do for forced height. So, we've kind of, what I'm reading, we've kind of created this, and now we won't maybe look at, no, we may not allow this. And this is something we created so we could do forced height. So, I think we should take ownership of it and continue with the plan we created, because it was good for us. So, is it not good for the next person that's still developing the same piece? It seems like it's a, we're not following what we'd asked the public to follow. Is that correct?
I will, I think the statement was made earlier. It was a zoning district that met the redevelopment needs, that created opportunities and areas for improvement for the existing homeowners that lived in the neighborhood, as well as creating some new lots for some infill redevelopment. And of course, with some of the other funding, allowed the county to come in and make a lot of infrastructure improvements in the neighborhood. And it, again, it worked well for the Salvation Army plan that was in place at that time.
Right. And I agree, and it was much needed, it was a great project. But with that carries the master plan, so that carries with the land, not with the Salvation Army. So, when we have other citizens, we're telling them, you've got to follow this land, this land is connected to this. Now, we're saying, maybe it's not what I'm hearing, where it should be, if long as they follow what we've set out, this should follow that same thing, because it goes with the land, not with the owner. So, Salvation Army's, to me, is out of it, and we're working on the master plan on the land.
No, and because it's such a different change over what the Salvation Army had proposed, that was the reason for the application for us tonight.
So, what we had approved was actually non-residential predominantly on that parcel?
With adding the non-residential and residential mixed-use, what was approved.
Right. But...
And now, we're saying that...
But this particular parcel was much more heavily, was where the commercial or non-residential was going to be concentrated.
Residential component at the time was the existing residential in those other lots that were created.
So, what I thought was created is it was a mixed-use, not just a commercial.
Both the existing residential and the Salvation Army, which was the non-residential piece.
And so, that's still what we've got today is a mixed-use. I mean, just a straightforward. So, we're, what we created before is basically, not exactly, but it's, in planning, basically the same thing that we wanted originally, was a mixed-use development right there. And that's what we're getting. Is that correct?
A mix of uses, that's... A mix of uses, that's proposed by the application, that's before you, meets that 80/20 part of having, other than just all residential.
And what we wanted.
Okay. 80/20 for just that piece of property, or 80/20 for the whole 46 acres?
I believe it meets it for both. It's looking at, the original master planned area was, the original rezoning was 47.1 acres. The analysis that staff did was looking at the total developable area of that 47.1, and looking at what was master planned. So we did analysis based on what's existing with the single-family residential, and then looking at the proposed multifamily residential, and then looking at the proposed self-storage facility, and the remaining use that has been part of the master plan on those five lots. And I believe it is 79% residential, and then the remainder is 21% non-residential.
It includes those five lots as being part of the commercial, though?
Correct.
So is, that's helping us out from what we had with the whole master plan, then? This is helping us get to where we should be.
Well, that...
Because that 20/80 is including the other residents, and so that's our whole master plan, that's helping us. What we didn't have is 20/80 in our section, with this including in the package, now we have the 20/80, or 21/79.
We are getting closer.
Yeah, okay.
So the expectation would be that the non-residential use that's shown on the original master plan and shown on this master plan would eventually be developed, since that's in line with what was initially approved by the county.
And we're in line with where we're heading with this.
So this would be, right, the next step towards meeting the complete compliance, which has been part of the plan.
And so I've been trying to get some kind of clarity on this particular piece, which is identified as future development, and I think it's about a little over, a little under three, four acres, maybe?
Correct, the 3.82 developable.
Yes, and that's behind the five single, existing, single-family residences to the west of the project. And that, I thought, was what pushed us up to the 21%.
In combination with the self-storage facility, correct?
With the storage facility, correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, right. And so that would, it would also help meet, if I knew a plan for that, you know, is it going to be additional storage units? It could be, am I right? It could be open space?
The land use code has it as institutional with open space and other amenities that go along with it. That's been in place since the original rezoning.
Right. That doesn't mean anything to me, though.
That's right.
I mean, it's, some clarity to that would really be helpful.
But is that still owned by the four owners?
Yes, those are separately owned, that's correct. Those are all separately owned. And again, that was part of the county-initiated zoning that went in place.
Right. But that wasn't that the four owners came and said, you can have the back part of my land to do whatever. Those are still four individual, single-family lots.
Correct.
But had been included in the county's master plan as we could possibly, but it's not anything in stone, is what the county came up with, as far as this we could possibly do. But those are still four privately-owned, single-family lots. So even though they're in this master plan, they're not owned by anybody but each four individual people who have not come together and said, we're going to do anything. So as far as I know, those are four still, single, that would be something if they ever, those four got together, they would have to come back to us and reapply and go through the whole process. It wouldn't be something that we could go out today and go, hey, we want to add this to it, because it's privately-owned land.
Again, there's not a lot of detail, but if they wanted to do something different than the master plan, they would need to come back.
Right.
But that mixed-use zoning is in place.
And we'd handle that, and when they come, there's no way of...
There's no detail about what that would be developed as.
There's no way of knowing that those four individuals will ever...
Just the clar, even having had that information would have been helpful. Because like, when we, when you see something that says future development, and it's just a kind of blank...
And I just, and with you talking and us thinking about it, you know, that's why I was thinking, well, it's still four single lots. So it's in a master plan, but it's really not, you would almost have to, you know, I don't know how I got in the master plan without being obtained from the owners, that it'd be like somebody coming on my land and saying, okay, we've got a master plan of your 10 acres over here. I'd be like, ah, excuse me, no, that's not in your master plan, you can go ahead and move those lines out. So it feels like that that got incorporated, thinking the redevelopment may go all the way up there, which was a good thought, and, you know, I know where the county was going, as far as, look, we want to help as many as we can in there, so we incorporated that in there. But really, we don't own it, there's nothing we can do with it, there's nothing, even though it was, there's an imaginary line drawn around it, it's just an imaginary line on those four lots. Pretty much meat and potatoes.
I actually have one more question.
The level of detail on those that there is in the application, that's before you...
That he's raised on this is, since there is mixed-use zoning on that property, can those five lot owners develop commercial part on the back of it by right? Would it not have to come back to the Board of Supervisors?
I was going to ask.
Or would it have to be a master plan amendment?
It'd have to come...
Should be a master plan amendment.
They'd have to combine some of those lots. Like I say, I don't think those on themselves have...
But I mean, assuming that they wanted to combine it and do something.
But it's got the mixed-use zoning on the land, and it's got these use categories labeled, so...
So, yeah, so I guess, I guess my question is...
If it's consistent with the existing master plan, meets the requirements of the zoning district, it meets the requirements of the proffers and all of those things that may otherwise be associated with the land, there would not necessarily be a reason for them to come back.
Back to the board, okay. Thank you.
But they'd have to come back with an application for ingress and egress and all that, in order to get to the back of that land, because it's kind of landlocked.
Well, but again, the original master plan vision, and some of the earlier conversations about some assumptions that would go in, that fed into the traffic impact study, was done in order to master plan the size and the geometric requirements for forest heights road. So from a master plan point of view, I, as staff, I wouldn't find it consistent if those five owners came in with some other commercial redevelopment under this mixed-use district, under this master plan, and wanted to put a whole different series of commercial entrances or separate turn lanes, you know, as, from what I can tell, that access to those lots, should they redevelop, especially from a commercial point of view, would have to come from forest heights road. And I think that's why you see in the applicant's current master plan, that they've master planned for those roads, which would, are proposed to be public roads, would be extended up to those property lines they stub out there, to allow for that future ingress and egress.
And they'd be limited on, with the topo, they'd be limited on the amount of actual building. It'd really only be one, two, and a half lots that they could get, the back ones with the slope and all that. They're probably going to lose lot number four and half of, if not three-quarters of lot number three.
There's a lot of wetlands in our PA that run along this back.
And the topo and everything else, it's just not going to, there's very little they can do back there, but they would, they would still have to come back to us.
If they were proposing to do something that was inconsistent with the mixed-use zoning that's on the ground today?
Correct.
So if they wanted to put more storage there, they would not have to come before us?
I'm not sure. I've got enough information to answer that on the spot tonight. I'd have to go back and look at the use categories, see what's used as where.
Okay.
That's a bit of a hypothetical, I just don't want to bring it.
Yeah.
You can certainly look into that much.
Thank you.
Any more questions for staff?
Sure.
And I'll just finish up mine. I was, I was concerned about several things on this. One was the, has been mentioned already, that our school generation numbers really aren't very accurate, and I think this would probably generate a lot more school kids than we are looking at on it. The density is another issue for me, because, you know, we put mixed use on what was essentially a low-density neighborhood in order to get it redeveloped. That allows the other pieces to be developed at a higher density. We didn't think much about it, I guess, because it was proposed to be something for the Salvation Army. So now we come back and we're looking at mixed-use density, which is considerably higher. And it does create a very stark contrast between the existing community and what it will look like if this is approved. So the density was a bit of a concern for me. But I think that the biggest overall concern for me is, I like the concept of affordable housing, but since we don't know whether it's going to be rental or for sale, and especially if it's for sale, we don't know how to deal with the long-term problem of keeping it affordable. It's, it creates some concern for me. So I believe at that point, I think the applicant would like to come back up and talk a little bit.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I was going to point out earlier, just on those five lots that we've been looking at, so the line that is a zoning line, their homes are legally conforming, that's a residential, as I understand it, designation in the front, and the, from that line you saw to the back is where the institutional, open space designation...
So that dotted line that moved them, that the front part of the lots where the houses are still legally conforming is the back part that's been put into the...
Correct.
Okay. I was not aware of that.
Yeah. But getting to the crux of this, we've heard a lot of concerns and issues tonight, and I think many of those can be addressed if we had a little more time. And given that, we would ask you to defer this case for a month, to give us a chance to attempt to answer questions and get you where you need to be.
Mr. Chairman, I think that would be an excellent move. You know, I'd certainly like to be able to support a project of this kind, and it's really a matter of just kind of cleaning up some of the uncertainty that is out there. So I would move to defer to our next meeting, which would be in July, I... 10th?
Ninth.
Ninth.
To be postponed to the ninth?
The ninth, yeah. And that the public hearing be closed.
Public hearing, okay.
You already closed that?
Not yet. Okay. We will close the public hearing, since I didn't get that done in time. Thank you. And we have a motion to defer this action until our July meeting.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have had about two and a half hours already, so we're going to take about a five-minute break, and we'll be back.[1379.41] a five-minute break, and we'll be back.[179.45]
It's fair to say that their corporate management has decided that they will be engaging in a very aggressive competitive posture that will essentially mean new refreshment of the experience of the park on a regular basis. Maybe a new attraction could be expected every year. And I think that what that means for Busch Gardens is a need to be not just the very good neighbor they've been in the past, but more active in kind of bringing people to an understanding of what's going on and a higher comfort level of what's going on. And also to recognize that there is a sensitivity to these issues in the community and that it's a good idea to kind of work with corporate headquarters, let them know that, you know, everything shouldn't be additional height and it shouldn't just be the race to the top. There are other kinds of attractions that are very, very likely to draw crowds and interest and be very good experiences. But, you know, if it's just 355 feet this year and 400 feet next year and 500 feet the year after that, that's going to increasingly run into problems. That's going to be more of a challenge. And so something that recognizes that there needs to be a better sense that this is a special park, the fact that it's been recognized so many times as the most attractive theme park in the world is something that says people come here not just for the rides, but for the broader experience. And that experience is really part of a broader community as well. And so I just hope that message comes through very clearly in what we're seeing here. And it also means in part of the community that they have to recognize that things are changing as well. And as we heard tonight, you know, well, yeah, I bought into the community expecting that there would be several months a year where there would be activity going on, but not the whole year. And we now know that, and it's a great thing that we have a more active economic engine here that is open at Christmas time and earlier in the spring and so forth and draws so many people for hollow scream and the like. But everybody's going to have to understand that there's going to be a need to look very closely at all this. And I really just wanted to bring one more point and ask Mr. Holt if you wouldn't mind coming up for a second. And that is, now, I wanted to describe in some detail my impression of this attraction, which I will not call a ride, I will not call a coaster, I will not call a dance show or anything of that nature. But just to say that when you receive the materials for this, could you give us just a little bit of an understanding of how that process works? And based on what you were provided in terms of descriptions, whether there's a point at which you would say, well, this isn't what we were approving in approving this height waiver?
Sure. So the way the staff administrative process works is the next step in the process would be for the applicant and the engineering team to submit a detailed site plan to then be followed by the building permit. And in both of those stages, it's staff's responsibility and ultimately would fall to me to make those consistency determinations with what the board had approved. And I think the description that you had done of the proposed attraction is almost identical with what my understanding is and what's been described to me in my discussions and in staff's discussions with the applicant. So we would ensure that as those details are developed, as those final engineering and structural plans are developed for county plan approval and building permit issuance, that that matches up with the board's expectations and with the legislative conditions that are put in place at the time. And if it's not, there's a process in the code that talks about a consistency determination. However, this is a height waiver, this isn't a master plan, so it would need to be consistent with the conditions and with the expectations of the board.
Okay. So I just wanted to give you that background of what had gone on at the meetings and my understanding of where things stand.
One more question. Not so fast.
Imagine that.
But this is the same process we go over every time that we go through this approval for Busch Gardens on each ride.
Correct, yes.
Nothing's new.
We've done numerous, the board and the county has done numerous height waiver permits for previous attractions.
Right, so nothing new about this one. This is the same process we always go through when we approve.
Yes, sir.
Right, the only thing that may be different is that this is the highest.
Would be the height.
Right.
But the process would be the same. Correct.
The board discussion?
Yeah, I would. Well, I'm on the end. You know, I know that, you know, there's been concerns about the height and what they're going to see and all that. And I also understand that, you know, on Busch Gardens' side, that they can't let but so much information out as they're developing it. They've developed it, they know what they're going to do. It's just they can't let so much out because that's part of the thrill of the whole ride and what they sell and what they do. Busch Gardens have been a great neighbor to Kings Mill and James City County, and they have worked very hard to do everything that we've asked them. And I have worked out on projects with Busch Gardens in the past, so I know what the county asked for after all of this and asked for how many plants you have, how much this you have, how much that you have, and they keep an inventory. And, you know, and they're very good about what they're doing and what they're putting together in James City County. Thank you for your hard work and your efforts and all that that you do for James City County. I know if they were gone, what the county might look like. Hope that never happens, hope you stay here forever. Also know that by limiting certain things, it limits the ability of a company to grow and it limits the ability for a company to move forward. And you can't handcuff a company and say you can't do all the, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do that, but develop yourself until be a bigger, better company. It just doesn't work. Private industry runs private industry. That's why it works so well. That's why it survives. It doesn't have government stepping in and touching it all the time. That's what makes it survive and makes it grow. So, you know, I'm caution about looking at stipulations or looking at, and John wasn't saying that, I'm just saying that I'm cautious about looking at what ifs, what can, what can't happen. Maybe you make a smaller ride, maybe you make a long skinny ride, you know. You're going to bring the rise to us as you go and we're going to decide what goes on in the board. But to limit them and say, all right, we only want this, is going to limit the company and what they can do, and it's going to send a message to corporate that maybe they can't do what they want to do. And we've got to look at the fact that maybe corporate says, well, then we'll put it in the other park. And then maybe, and I'm not saying, I know any of this, but I know how things go. And maybe corporate says, well, maybe we sell Williamsburg and another company buys it that's not the neighbor that we have right now. We have a gold mine in Busch Gardens right now, working with us and helping us and develop it, and I'm glad to hear. And the last thing I'd want to see is anything come out of this board that would think that we don't want to do, and we're not, and that's why I want to clarify this, that we want to partner with Busch Gardens and help you grow and help you move forward and, because all the help you give to James City County and what you put back in, not only taxes, but all the gifts and everything you give to our community, it's amazing and we don't take that for granted. We understand where you're at. And we understand at times it's hard for, you know, y'all to get everything done with all the stipulations we have, and we hold them to a high standard with code and compliance and everything else. I've been out there. They don't get away with any honey, I'll tell you that. Much as I, you know, I've seen it. So they're held at a high standard and they hold themselves at a high standard. So that's, I just wanted to make those few comments. Thank you.
I will make my comments very brief. First of all, I want to thank everyone for the engagement. I appreciate the citizens' engagement from the residents in Kings Mill and James City County. And then we obviously got outed on some roller coaster website because we have been deluged from people who, not roller coaster, but an amusement website of people who very much are big Busch Garden fans. So we've heard from them as well. And I just appreciate very much that people are engaged in the process. And I know which way ever the vote goes this evening that it will be frustrating to some, but that I've taken each into consideration. And I also thank, I thank the residents of Kings Mill for being good James City County citizens and also thank Busch Gardens for all that they do for us and for our local economy. So, thank you.
I won't add much more than what my colleagues have said. We appreciate you here very much. And I, although I will say, one email we received showed a picture of a deserted amusement park in Ohio or something like that. And I will tell you, it didn't appeal to me a bit. So thank you for what you bring here, thank you for what you do here. We appreciate the citizen output, input, and we appreciate everything that you do to provide jobs for our youth, jobs for our citizens, and have an outstanding park. Thank you for everything you do for us.
And I'll just say that I will be supporting the height waiver request tonight. It is the case that, you know, I have the representation of this constituency and appreciate all of my constituents, whether they are the park or the residents of Kings Mill. In this particular case, I feel that this is a project that I can support, again, with the hope that as we move forward, we'll see a more variety to the kinds of attractions that draw crowds to our amusement park. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll just be very brief as well. One of the things that was mentioned this evening was our 60-foot limit and why we don't quote adhere to it more often. And I would, I would offer that that 60-foot limit is not an arbitrary map, absolute or a maximum. It's a level at which we have to start considering the impacts. And anything above that 60-foot doesn't mean that it shouldn't be there, it means that if it's going to be there, we have to weigh the pros and cons. We have to weigh the impacts on the applicant who wants this and the public who is going to have to look at it. And we've had plenty that are a lot higher. We, you know, have radio towers, we have cell towers. We've had some pretty contentious cases on this before. It usually deals with visual impacts and sometimes noise. I think here the impacts have been adequately mitigated and I'll be happy to support it. I'll look to the board for a rail motion.
On you want a motion? I'll be happy to move it. Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We are now to contract award consultant services to update the comprehensive plan and complete several strategic plan initiatives. Seven hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Ms. Tammy Rosario.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. The planning division's fiscal year '19 and '20 professional service budgets include funds for the purchase of consultant services in support of four operational initiatives from the 2035 strategic plan. One, to update the county comprehensive plan. Two, to conduct scenario planning. Three, to conduct a cumulative fiscal infrastructure, community character, and environmental impact analysis of expanding the primary service area. And four, refine fiscal impact model to assess development impacts on fiscal health. As compared to previous plans, consultant support for the comprehensive plan update will expand and enhance opportunities for community engagement, allow full integration of the modeling efforts into the comprehensive plan process, and deepen staff's ability to address topics required by state code and requested by the planning commission and board of supervisors during previous meetings on the comprehensive plan. Additionally, consultant support for the scenario planning, cumulative impact analysis, and fiscal impact model tasks will provide the specialized technical knowledge necessary to build, run, and extract pertinent information from sophisticated models. James City County solicited proposals from qualified interested parties to guide an update to the comprehensive plan for the county and to complete the technical tasks associated with the strategic plan initiatives. The evaluation committee, utilizing the criteria in the RFP, determined that the EPR team of EPRPC, Michael Baker International, Clarion Consultants, and Tischler Bice Incorporated was most fully and highly qualified to meet the comprehensive plan and strategic plan consultant services needs of the county, based on experience, approach, demonstrated skills, qualifications, and the ability to work within the county's timeline. Staff recommends adoption of the resolution authorizing the contract award to EPRPC for consultant services for these four operational initiatives. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Questions for? I thought I saw that there will be reevaluation of some of our policies, that we're going to be looking at our school policy, school capacity policies and some of the others that maybe are not serving us as well as we might like.
I think the work from this comprehensive plan will lay the foundation for that, and so it will make it much easier to evaluate those policies.
May I ask, what did it cost last time?
Well, we have apples and oranges throughout the different comprehensive plans that we've updated based upon the size of the effort, the scope that we've had. In 2009, we had more of a major comprehensive plan. Still, it was nothing on the scale of this comprehensive plan update process. The total consultant services at that time was approximately $145,000. That was just for the comprehensive plan portion of it. This also includes other strategic plan initiatives.
And this is four plans?
This is four different operational initiatives.
That's a chunk of money. That's a chunk of money, that's, that...
And what, oh, sorry. What do we have in place to hold our consultant to making sure that it is done correctly? Do we have holdback of funds? Do we have, what do we have in there to protect us financially if all is not done correctly?
Well, we typically put our consultant services contracts together with milestones and we hold them to those milestones before paying for those services. We have not completed the scoping and particulars of the contract with purchasing, so we have flexibility in how we set that up. But it's worked quite well in our other projects to set it up that way. If they are not proceeding in a way that we see fit based upon the scope and the milestones that we've set forth, we do not need to continue further.
But how much at that point would we have, I mean, what is our, what's our payout? I mean, you said you haven't finalized that, I guess, with purchasing, so to say?
Ending the discussion here with the board. But we have set forth the framework for that and we have, it's set into phases, five phases, with number of tasks associated with each of those phases, and so we can follow along quite clearly how we're progressing and what should be paid out based upon the deliverables.
And with the four plans, are they, are they all equally spent or is it one's more than the other? Because it's looking at seven hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty is roughly 180 a plan?
They are different levels. That's not a bad way of looking at it from an averaging standpoint, but they are different amounts for each. The comprehensive plan, and I guess another thing to point out, if we just divide it out among the four different plans, we don't take into account the fact that this is an integrated process. And that's something that's very exciting and unique to this, is that we will be using these models to help us make decisions for the comprehensive plan along the way. And all of the community engagement that we do will be for those four different tasks. And so there are elements of it that are integrated and hard to separate out financially.
And this will be, this is money that we're going to spend on consultants. It's not including any in-house staff time. So this is just for consultants themselves, because I know on the plans, you know, we'll have staff and everything else involved in it. This is just consultant side. So it could, it not could be, but it will be more than that when we figure staff time and everything else involved in it.
These are existing resources and this is the process that we've gone through each comprehensive plan update. As far as using the entirety of our staff resources, you know, we have a number of planners who work on both current planning and comprehensive planning tasks. We have an advertising budget, for instance, but we typically rely upon consultants to help us for these very technically oriented tasks. And that's what we consider, you know, the scenario planning, the cumulative impact, and now community engagement as well, is can be very technical oriented.
And have we ever spent this much on the four items in the past? I know it's probably a hard question to answer because you may not have the, and I'm sorry I didn't get that in writing to you earlier, but I just, it just came to me as we were discussing.
We've never undertaken something of this magnitude for a comprehensive plan. We've done our comprehensive plan update and we've done transportation modeling as a component of that, but we've never undertaken scenario planning, the cumulative impact, and the fiscal impact modeling and integrated into the comprehensive plan process. But when we talk about things such as what will be the implications of something as great as expanding the primary service area, or if that weren't on the table, as, you know, a big exercise in and of itself, just in the past, individual land use applications, we haven't been able to integrate all the different perspectives into it that we're anticipating the board is desiring for this effort.
Okay, so this will give us more options during the comp plan in order to say, what if we do this, what if we do that? Then those worksheets or scenarios, we can pull those into the plan and say, well, if you do that, it's going to, it's going to cause this or this to happen?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. That helps me. Thank you.
Questions for staff? Okay, I'll look for board discussion or a motion. Mr. Chairman, I'll move the resolution and recognizing that $723,000 is a lot of money, it also does come with some very, not only a large number of supporter, supporting people in these four organizations that are part of this group, but also with a very long and deep knowledge of the particular subjects they're looking at. I think one of the things we are recognizing here is that we are paying for some considerable expertise in these, in these areas that will take us far beyond what our very talented staff would be able to do in-house. And so I think it's a, it's a good investment for us. We're spending almost a quarter of a billion dollars a year in our budgets and this is an update for the next five years to get us on good track, so hopefully it'll be well spent. More discussion?
Well, I mean, I hear you and I appreciate that. It's just that that is, it's an incredible amount of money. And so I certainly hope that, you know, I would like to know when we're completed with purchasing, what exactly are the, standards is not the word that I want to use, but, metrics, thank you. What are the metrics that we're using? How are we going to make sure that this is happening and who's responsible for making sure that that is happening and that we're getting what we need? So, Mr. Purse, would you like to come forward?
I just wanted to point out that Mr. Holt and Ms. Rosario have asked me a number of times to get on different work session calendars. I have at least two before the end of the year and they've asked for more. So please have no doubt that staff will be in front of you giving you updates regularly as we go through this process. Not only is there a strong citizen component, but the board has asked to be involved in all of this as well, and we are, we are well aware of that, and we will be coming to you regularly.
Okay, it's not just coming to me. It's the checkup with the, with the consultant and making sure that the, like, bringing to me that the consultant is doing what they're supposed to do. Okay, great.
And then with that report, we'll, we'll, I guess, once we go through purchasing and all that, we'll be, we'll know a little bit more in depth on where we're spending this amount of money because we're getting more bang for our buck and we're able to have these extra tools to use that we haven't had in the past.
Absolutely.
Because I'm sure with 722,000 and some change, there might be a question or two from a citizen on what kind of report is that and will it be just put on the shelf and left, or are you actually going to use it this time?
Yeah.
And I know we'll be getting that.
So while you're here, Mr. Purse, with that and to your point, Mr. Hippel, that how can we, how do we know along the way in this process, we've got this 700-some-odd-thousand-dollar figure to get these, for the consultants? And to your point, that it's probably going to end up at some point more than that, how do we, how do we track that? How do we follow that? How do we know how much, at what point at the end, it's actually going to cost us along the way?
If you're, if you're asking about staff, staff gets regular updates. When invoices come in, the invoices show percentage paid off of the total contract. And we have those triggers built into that contract that says, once you get to 30%, you're supposed to have X, Y, and Z accomplished. So we will know not to pay...
What if they don't?
Then we don't pay that invoice. They submit invoices as they go.
We have some control over how much is going, okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't give them a lump sum. They invoice us as they do the work.
Thank you. More questions?
Already made it. We got sidetracked. We have a motion, sir.
Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhow?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Okay, board requests and directives. Who would like to start?
I just have a brief one. Can we please make sure that we look into some of the concerns Mr. Fowler continues to have, especially on vegetation growing across Verizon lines and some property on Richmond Road in the Plano area? That's a little questionable. Thank you very much.
I'm good. I'm, yeah, I think. Good time.
I just, I had a, first, I appreciate the resolution earlier this evening, my deepest condolences to the city of Virginia Beach. And I appreciate what we're doing because I know that it is very, it is very scary when something like that happens, especially in a public institution and government. And so I appreciate the support that is being given to our employees very much. I wanted to, I went to, I did not work the polls today. I went and visited the two polls in Berkeley that were open, and when I walked into Clairebird Baker, the principal was working in the hallway because he'd had about 25 calls from concerned parents regarding the fact that the primary was being held on a day that the school building was open. This is the last week of school. And then I proceeded to go to Matoka Elementary, and while I was at Matoka, a James City County police officer came through that I spoke with. That was his third school he had been to, so the police were having a presence. I did get an email from someone that was concerned about schools being opened, and I forwarded that to Mr. Stevens. And I know that our voter registrar has been worried about this for, you know, we close on election day. Primaries are a little, and I have a feeling if schools had decided to close today, there would have probably been 25 calls from upset parents for a whole nother reason. But, but there is the presidential primary in March, and so I just... And so I just, I think we need to be aware of, you know, it's a different time than it was a few years ago. And this parent seemed to be very concerned. I, just a couple of things that I attended, the Hotel Motel Association, Ms. Sadler and I attended a meeting that they had last week. We had the Business Appreciation Event, which I thought went very well out at the Williamsburg Winery, and that's done by all three economic developments. And I know several of my colleagues were there as well. I, Mr. Stevens and I toured the Virginia Peninsula Jail. And that was a very interesting experience and
You're welcome.
Honey, I wasn't going to say thank you, but, okay. But what stood out to me was that there is some infrastructure at that jail that was probably there when it opened that, that needs some updating. And so I appreciate, I know that Mr. Pham works very closely with the, the city administrator and the county managers and, and so I think I just flip flopped that. And on his capital improvement, and he's been trying to make some savings out there so that he can do some upgrades. So I'm appreciative of that. I know that we, I think most of us attended the annual police recognition and our, the speaker was Mr. Hippel. And we have graduation on Saturday. And then last week, I attended the conference planning for VACO. So in Richmond, I'm sure there's been more, but it's a little glimpse. Thank you.
Well, I want to, first of all, I think that the General Assembly was considering legislation this year to move the primary to the third week in June, which would then pass where schools are open.
And also, they've moved when schools can open to two weeks earlier. So that may work the problem out as well. However, that still leaves March, so.
Yes, because Norwich was a mess today, too.
City elections in May, too. First of all, let me thank Mr. Hippel for not taking my time. I wanted to start off just by mentioning, it seems like there've been a number of people who passed away recently that have been very important and great contributors to the community, but I do want to highlight two. Edward Radcliffe, late, late May passed away. Edward was 97 years old. His wife, Yula, was one of the most powerful and important residents of Grove and is memorialized in the section of Pocahontas Trail that runs through Grove as the Yula Radcliffe Memorial Highway. Edward himself was a constant supporter for her and also involved in many different ways in helping the community. And he is also, he was also the father of Kevin Radcliffe, who is on our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and on our Clean County Commission. And Rosalyn Dodd, who works for the Community Action Agency and has been involved in many other important activities. And their four siblings don't currently live in James City County, but we have many other relatives of Edward who, in, in so many different ways, was just a wonderful individual. And his parting gift was to say, I do not want a service that lasts more than one hour. And his family was very respectful of that. That same day that I attended a memorial service for Edward Radcliffe, I attended a memorial service for Bill Bryant, who certainly has been a fixture in this community. He was an editor of the Virginia Gazette and of the Daily Press. He involved himself in lots of issues that were important to the community, including being the head of a growth commission in the 1980s that was focused on an issue that has continued to be an important one for us. He is a journalist, a historian, loved to do tours for schoolchildren at Jamestown and just made so many different friends as the organizer of the Friday Lunch Group that I think probably several of us have attended at one time or another to present. I'll just go very quickly through a couple other things. I want to congratulate one of our residents, Kathy Hornsby, who the College will be Mary Honored with the Apprentice Award for Community Service. To tell you that I attended the town hall that Congresswoman Elaine Luria held in Yorktown last week, along with a number of our colleagues, Sheriff Danny Diggs of York County and Sheila Noel and Jeff Wasmere, or Chad Green, rather, was there and others. On June 1st, I attended Clean the Bay Day where our Frank Polster, who is a member of our planning commission, was the organizer at my particular site. That was also Will Barnes Day that our righteous director of our Clean County Commission has already reminded us about. And with Ms. Larson braved a torrential downpour to attend the GED graduation for Williamsburg James City Schools and heard an inspiring speech by Dr. Arizo, a refugee from Afghanistan who completed his GED while working at McDonald's and then went on to become a physician, completing his training at Eastern Virginia Medical Schools. That was a great event. On June 8th, I went out to War Hill Community Garden for their field day and it was just incredible. I encourage all of you to, if you haven't been out there to visit it, there are 40 plots that individuals have purchased or have rented for this season and a very large community farm that provides food to the needy and to schools and to others. And they are just doing a terrific job with that community garden. I'll also nod my hat to Rob Till's Community Garden in Grove. Later that afternoon, I went to the NAACP's celebration of scholars and was able to see $35,000 of scholarship money given to young people in the community through the NAACP. And finally, yesterday, attended the working group on proffers and impact fees that is being run by the Virginia Housing Commission. Our own Adam Kinsman is a member of this working group. And I presented a report on a survey conducted by the Coalition of High Growth Communities in its preliminary form, which will be delivered in a more refined form this Friday when the Coalition meets in Spotsylvania County. And Mr. Eisenhower is planning to attend that as well. That's it. Thank you.
You guys have covered all of mine.
The busy time.
Yep. Okay, reports to the county administrator.
Chair, members of the board, I do want to take a moment and it was my hope this evening to publicly recognize Ms. Sharon Day as our Financial Management Services Director. Instead, I will publicly announce that since she had a conflict and had to leave a few minutes ago. Ms. Day does have a strong, she was a strong internal candidate and I publicly advertised the position to ensure that we found the best qualified applicant for James City County. And I can say without hesitation, Ms. Day was the most qualified applicant. She holds a BS in accounting from Christopher Newport University, an MS in accounting from Old Dominion University, is a licensed certified public accountant, has over 20 years of experience in both public and private sector accounting functions. She is no stranger to the Board of Supervisors, county staffer, James City County, as she has served as our interim director since Sue Mellon retired in April. And prior to her interim role, she served as our Assistant Financial Management Service Director since August of 2016. Ms. Day is involved in professional and civic organization and lives in James City County along with her husband, Bill, and children, Caitlin and Colin. And I am delighted to have her as part of my executive leadership team and look forward to her success in this new role with James City County. And again, she'll be back at one of your next meetings to say hello as well.
I'm sure she will.
Yes.
She probably didn't note it on her resume, but her husband was one of my students.
I didn't see that.
Of course.
Two other or three other items I'd like to mention. Jamestown Jam will be held Jamestown Beach Event Park, June 28th, starting at 6:30 until 8:00 PM. The theme for this jam will be today's hits featuring the tight slack. So come enjoy free live music at Jamestown Beach Event Park. James City County has also owned an account on Nextdoor. Public agencies use it as a way to share information and receive feedback with their residents. It is designed to facilitate private conversations between neighbors. So it's not similar to Facebook where we can search and monitor. So as a result, we are unable to monitor it, but citizens can communicate with us by responding directly to our messages or by contacting us privately. Nextdoor does give us the flexibility to send information to all county residents who are registered with Nextdoor or just to an individual neighborhood. So it does give some flexibility in our notice or messaging. And we did send out our first post last week about recycling to over 13,000 residents in 139 neighborhoods. So I do think it's a good opportunity. This was a suggestion of one of our supervisors and I will say it does appear to be a good way to communicate with our James City County residents. So thanks for that suggestion. And then finally, the James City County Department of Social Services will host two workshops. The first one will be a smart money management workshop to be held June 13th, 6 to 8:00 PM. The second one will be a home maintenance workshop to be held June 20th, 6 to 8:00 PM. Both will be held at our Herman's Human Services Building. Both workshops are free for James City County residents, but we do ask residents to call 757-259-5340. Again, 757-259-5340 to reserve a seat and let us know they would like to participate. Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Okay, we, before we come into our, go into a closed session, I wanted to say, based on discussions earlier this evening with county attorney and county administrator, I would like to move that we amend the closed session agenda to add two items. Number one is a discussion regarding the disposition of real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the public body, specifically the portion of Jolly Pond Road that crosses the Jolly Pond Dam in accordance with Section 2.23711A3 of the Code of Virginia. And number two, consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically the contract to provide curbside recycling services in accordance with Section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia. So with that, we have those two, if we would, that motion would, any discussion will like to add that to them. Motion to add? Motion to add. Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower? Aye. Okay. Now, I got to ask for a motion to enter closed session for consideration of a personnel matter, the performance of individuals to county boards and/or commissions pursuant to Section 2.23711A1. The consideration of a personnel matter, the performance review of the county attorney and county administrator pursuant to Section 2.23711A1. And the consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the public body, specifically a parcel in the Stonehouse District for potential recreational purposes pursuant to Section 2.23711A3 of the Code of Virginia. And that is, those are in addition to the two we just approved. Motion? Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're going to move to closed session.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna move to closed session.[163.72]
Okay. Call us back into session, and I guess our first thing is to have certification.
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify that we only spoke about those items we indicated we would speak about in the closed session.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I want to move some appointments. To the Historical Commission, we have five reappointments to terms that would expire on June 30th, 2022. Frank Abbott, Adrienne Carter, John Labanish, Alan Outlaw, and Stephen Phillips. To the Thomas Nelson Community College Board, to reappoint Mary Ann Maimoni to a new term that would expire on June 30th, 2023. Staff appointments, Sharon Day reappointment to the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Commission, expiring on June 30th, 2023. Rebecca Vinroot appointed to the Colonial Group Home Commission for a term expiring on June 30th, 2023. Jason Purse reappointed to the Williamsburg Regional Library Board, expiring on June 30th, 2023. And that would be my motion.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We have one resolution where we discuss the purchase of property. Everybody has a copy of the resolution. I will look for a motion to adopt that resolution.
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that based on the board's valuation, we authorize a salary increase of 3% for County Attorney Adam Kinsman, effective October 1st, 2019.
Okay. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. I think that concludes our business.
Motion to dismiss. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Until... I'll undertake a motion to adjourn until 4:00 PM on June 25th, 2019, for the work session. Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. That concludes our business.
Motion to dismiss. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Until... I'll undertake a motion to adjourn until 4:00 PM on June 25th, 2019, for the work session. Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.